I'd like to call the March 15, 2017 Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission, both to those of you who are in attendance this evening and those watching on television. For your information, there are copies of tonight's agenda at the speaker's lectern. For tonight's meeting, we have six public hearing items on the agenda. For those of you who may not have attended one of our meetings in the past, I would remind you that after each public hearing item, the Commission may or may not choose to act on that item this evening, and we will then proceed to the rest of the agenda. This will also include a general public comment period toward the end of the meeting, when members of the public may speak to Planning Commission business that is not on our regular agenda for public hearing. We now move to adoption of the minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the February 8, 2017, regular meeting and the February 17, 2017, special meeting work session?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the February 8 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Second. Did you want to include the other meeting as well?
We can. I think they're different. Not everyone was at the second meeting, so I figured it would be better to do them both separately.
That's fine. We can take them one at a time. On the February 8 meeting, the motion's been made and seconded. I would note that the minutes that you have for that session that's at your desk tonight, there was one substantive change from the draft that you received in your packets, and that had to do with adding some detail, an explanation of the motion that was made on the Hillell Center to include all the proper conditions. And if you want to know more information about that, Robin can read those changes to you. But they had that, okay. Any other discussion on the February 8 minutes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Do I hear a motion for the February 17 special meeting work session minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Both minutes are unanimously approved. We now move to item four on the agenda, declarations of conflicts of interest. If there's any member of the Commission who believes that he has a conflict of interest regarding any matter that is on the agenda for this evening, they are recognized at this point to state what the item is and the existence of a personal interest. Does anybody have a declaration to make this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. We now move to our public hearing items. For each item on the public hearing calendar, the city staff will present their report on the issue, followed by any questions from the Planning Commissioners, and then followed by the public hearing. For those items that involve applications being considered at the public hearing, the applicant is heard first for no more than 15 minutes, followed by any other persons wishing to speak. After everyone has had a chance to speak, the applicant will be afforded no more than five minutes to respond. At that point, the public hearing will be closed. The Planning Commission may then choose to act on the item now or later. Please remember that the Planning Commission does not make final decisions on public hearing items, but simply makes recommendations to city council for their consideration and final action. We ask, when the time comes for public comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, including ZIP code, clearly for the record. As provided in the Commission's bylaws, you are asked to please observe the five-minute time rule, and you may only speak one time to an item. No dialogue is permitted between speakers. We'll now move to item five on the agenda, public hearing. It's SUP 2017-02, the Vertical Bridge Development LLC, is the less C, requests a special use permit for a telecommunications tower on an unaddressed parcel, GPIN 7778-97-6600, adjacent to 1350 Bellman Road and across Bellman Road from M&amp;M Recycling Center and Print Innovators Printing Plant in the Battlefield Industrial Park. The parcel is within the General Industrial Zoning District, I-2. New communication towers also require a comprehensive plan compliance review by the Planning Commission to determine if the approximate location, character, and extent of a planned telecommunications tower is substantially in accord with the 2015 comprehensive plan per the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2232, prior to action on the special use permit. Both the comprehensive plan compliance review and the special use permit require public hearings. The proposed telecommunications tower will be operated by Verizon, but also will permit the co-location of other telecommunications providers. The proposed use would have a floor area ratio of 0.001. The I-2 zoning district permits a 1.0 floor area ratio. The comprehensive plan designates the area for general industrial, which has no specific recommended commercial density. Mr. Craig, I know you're anxiously waiting.
Thank you, Chair. If I could have the computer, please. The issue before the Planning Commission tonight, as introduced, is a 150-foot-tall telecommunications tower. It is proposed by Vertical Bridge Development, II LLC. What you see on the screen outlined in the dashed line, dash cyan line, is the unaddressed 56-acre parcel in the industrial park. The property is owned General Industrial, and that permits telecommunications towers by special use permit. The blue arrow on the screen points to the 5,625-square-foot lease area where the telecommunications tower is proposed. Currently, the lease area is a mix of field and woodland. The leased area will contain what you see on this slide, the 150-foot-tall tower, which is on the left, within a 250-square-foot fenced compound, and that's what's on the right of your screen. Also within the compound will be necessary supporting equipment and a backup generator. The compound will be accessed by a 12-foot-wide gravel drive, roughly 200 feet extending off of Bellman Road. The proposal requires two determinations from the Planning Commission this evening. First, as stated in the advertisement, Virginia State Code requires that prior to the approval of any new telecom tower, the Planning Commission must make a determination that the proposed facility's general location, character, and extent thereof is substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. And second is the consideration of the special use permit required by the city's Unified Development Ordinance. So we'll start with the comprehensive plan. There are three relevant sections to focus on. First is the Public Services, Public Facilities, and Preserved Open Space Chapter. It contains a list of preferred telecommunications tower sites on page 56. The list includes the City Shop site, and if you look at the bottom map on your screen, we've outlined the City Shop site in a dashed green line. The proposed location, again identified by the blue arrow, is on the property adjacent to the City Shop, but it is roughly a quarter-mile away. Both locations are within the industrial park and are on the west side of Bellman Road. The City Shop site, again shown in green, is closer to the residential zoning in the Mayfield neighborhood. So if you look at that City Shop site that's shown in green, you can see that the yellow zoning is relatively close to that parcel. And then if you look down where the telecom tower is proposed, there's a gray area extending into the neighborhood. That's a CSX change station. It's also a concrete industrial plant. It does effectively provide additional buffering for this site, as opposed to the City Shop site, from the residential areas. Staying in the Public Services chapter, Goal One is to provide the city's public services in an efficient and effective manner to all city residents. Similarly, Initiative 16 is to encourage Internet providers to build out their fiber-optic and broadband cable infrastructure, so they can provide the fastest and most reliable service possible to all citizens and businesses. The two maps you see on the right were provided by the applicant. They're propagation maps. Just generally, the areas, the blue dots, the blue blobs, that's the strongest signal strength. Green is, let's just call it medium. Yellow would be light. And then when you're getting into orange, and then the tan color, those are gaps in coverage. So the top map is what exists now. If you look at the bottom map, you're looking at the same area. The fourth, lower-right kind of blob is the proposed telecom tower. So that's the propagation. That's the area that this tower is proposed to serve. These maps are provided by the applicant, so if you'd like more detail on that, they would be happy to share that with you, I'm sure, during their presentation. Goal Three of the Residential Neighborhoods and Housing Chapter is to ensure the residential areas of the city continue to comprise a collection of distinct and attractive neighborhoods, each possessing a sense of place, history, and shared identity. So the map in the top right of the screen shows whether or not the tower would be visible from different locations in the city. Blue dots indicate that it would be visible, it would not be visible, would not be visible. Red dots indicate that it would be visible. Most of those are in the industrial park, though there are three in Mayfield, in the Mayfield residential area. Well, two in Mayfield, and then one, View 6, is from Canterbury. The applicant has provided the views that you see on your screen, three, five, and six. The orange arrows point to a tower that they have added into the photos to simulate what you would see when you're at that location. And the tower will be visible from Mayfield, especially in View 5, as you drive down Houston The third section, relevant section of the comprehensive plan, relates to Planning Area Nine and the Land Use Planning Section. The main relevant opportunity is to respect the battlefield lines of sight. That is the, the battlefield lines of sight are delineated on page 105 of the comprehensive plan, and that's the map that you see on the screen. We have added the star in the bottom right to show where the proposed telecommunications tower is located, and it's not within any of the battlefield lines of sight. Also, I think it's important to note, as part of the typical review of a proposed telecom tower, the State Historic Preservation Officer makes a determination, and in this case, they determined that the tower would have no effect on any historic sites, battlefields, or structures. And I spoke with our Historic Resources Planner today, the National Park Services informs that process. So first issue, comprehensive plan compliance. Those were the three sections that we felt were relevant to making this determination. And now it will be up to you all to determine whether the tower's location, character, and extent is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. In doing so, you will have to balance the provision of efficient and effective telecom services to the Route 217 corridor against the tower's visibility from the Mayfield neighborhood. The staff recommendation for the determination is to determine that the proposed facility is in conformance with the comp plan. So the second issue tonight that you all need to weigh in on is recommendation on the applicant's special use permit request. Comp plan compliance is a big component of a special use permit review, so I won't go back through that. What I'll focus on here is conformance with the Unified Development Ordinance. Section 7241 generally contains use standards for different types of uses. The most, the longest, the most standards are, in our ordinance, are applied to telecom towers. 7241.2G4 is the section. It's got to do with the type of construction, studying where existing towers are and existing capacity is, ensuring that there's not an undue proliferation of these towers around the city. The applicant has provided information addressing all of those. I think the one item that the applicant has stated in, to show that they comply with this standard that we should follow up on, that any recommendation for approval should follow up on, is that there is a standard about steel, compliance with ANSI, EIA, TIA 222, structural steel standards. If you build to that standard, you don't have to comply with a fall line easement. You don't have to provide 150-foot circle around your tower to ensure that it doesn't collapse on something. They have stated that they are going to build their proposed tower to that standard. Staff feels that if this, if you all recommend approval, you should recommend that that be a condition of the approval as well. The other relevant section of the Unified Development Ordinance are the development standards. The application complies with the development standards. There are two modifications that would be required for this application as proposed, and they both relate to the access. What the applicant has proposed is a 12-foot-wide gravel drive and a gravel parking area to serve the site. The applicant has provided information that there's roughly one or two trips a month onto this site, its maintenance vehicles from the telecom provider. The general public does not access this site. Public Works, the Fire Department, they're both part of our technical review committee. They're confident that with certain standard to be enforced during the site plan review, their vehicles can access the site. They won't have any issues getting back there. As a staff, we're always looking for ways to minimize asphalt throughout the city, and this is a good project to reduce, modify the standard to allow a 12-foot gravel drive in place of a 24-foot-wide asphalt strip that's rarely ever used. So we're okay with those two modifications. Otherwise, this proposal is within, in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance. And our recommendation is that you recommend approval to the city council of this proposal with the following, with the two conditions that are listed on the screen. I think on balance, the comprehensive plan lists acceptable sites for telecom towers. The zoning ordinance contains strict standards regarding the location of those towers, and meeting those standards is not easy. This particular site fills a demonstrated service gap. It's within the industrial park. It's adjacent to one of the sites listed in the comprehensive plan. It's not disruptive to the history of the area, though it would be somewhat visible from a residential area. And that's the reasoning behind our recommendation here. Happy to answer any questions you all have.
Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Craig?
I do. Mike, you mentioned that if it was built to the ANSI standards, you wouldn't have to have the fall area. Just looking at the site plan, are there any existing buildings, even if it didn't, within a fall area of 150 feet? Is there any structures that would be impacted?
Well, let's go back to the site plan on the computer if we can. Chris, I did not take a precise measurement. I can kind of guesstimate here.
Yeah, I'm looking at, most of the dimensions are over 200 feet, that I could tell.
Okay. Well, I think you're answering your own question. I mean, it is a fairly, it's a large parcel, so if Bellman Road, if the distance off Bellman Road to roughly the point of that arrow is 200 feet, then, you know, it does get close to the Milstead Air Conditioning Supply House to the north. I don't have an exact measurement for you, and I wouldn't want to put a number out there right now that's not right.
I'm just looking at their site plan, C1, and it looks like the distance that property lies about 279 feet.
Oh, if that's the case, it's well within, it's well outside the, what would be a required fall line.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. O'Toole?
Yeah, I had one question. You mentioned the generator. Is that going to have any noise associated with it, or how do they, it's just a standby generator?
Yeah, I'll let the applicant address how they're going to use the generator.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Craig?
I have one. So I see on L2, it talks about protection of trees and plant materials. Is this, I mean, what's the distance there that they would be putting these fencing aspects? It's a tree-protection barricade, and I'm seeing a number of trees, so would they do that all the way down that gravel road, or just around where the tower itself is?
Okay. You're looking at the landscape standard?
Correct.
Yes, sir. That detail is used to protect any trees that they're going to preserve on-site, so they would be required to put the protection around any trees that are not proposed to be removed.
So that's only, in our one, that's a one, two, so we're just talking about four trees or something like that?
That is what they have shown they're impacting. You know, it looks like maybe there's an additional tree along the drive lane that would be impacted as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Craig, I have several questions. Could you go back and put up the slide showing the leased area? Do you have a, yes, now, right there. The property where this tower would be is a, I believe, a 56-acre, 56.5-acre parcel? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And who's the owner of that?
It's Technotics LLC.
And, and, but that's not the entity that's erecting the tower, right?
No, sir.
They have the less C of that.
Yes, sir.
And so, the area that's being leased, is that the area that's shown in the sort of dotted square?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, it's my understanding that this is a wooded area. I have not gone out and looked at it, but the whole, this whole area is wooded, correct?
Yeah, I see the picture on the left, that is a stand of trees. And then if you look towards the bottom right where the arrow is pointing, there is a stand of trees there, but there's also kind of an open field in between the stand of trees and the Milstead Air Conditioning Property.
Right. And so, there's no way of knowing that any of this area, once the tower is erected, that any of it will remain wooded? Right?
The owner of the property can always cut down trees, yes, sir.
That's right. So this may be very visible next week after the tower is erected, because the owner's doing something else with the property, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's really no assurances that we have that this is going to be screened permanently, because this, the leased area is extremely small. It's 250 square feet, right? Yeah. That's tiny. Was the parks, did the city contact the Park Service about this?
Yes, sir.
And they, but I didn't see anything in the packet that they submitted any kind of written.
No, they didn't. They informed the State Historic Preservation Officer's determination, which is included in your packet.
Okay. My other question is about the ANSI standard. I thought you said that the ANSI standard was in our code.
Yes, sir, it is.
So why does that need to be a condition?
Well, you can, you can opt to use that standard or not. What they have proposed is to use that standard. I mean, I guess conformance with their package would cover it, too. You know, that may be a moot point.
Well, there's nothing wrong with that, and I just wasn't sure why it was needed as a condition, but that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any other Commissioner questions for Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I think that 250 square feet is off a bit. You have on that very first slide, you said it was 250 square feet of fenced area, fenced compound, but the...
That's not what 25 by 25 is?
It's 75 by 75 is what it's supposed to be, I think, according to the drawing.
Ooh.
And...
I think my math was wrong.
75 times 75 is 56.25.
That's what it should say.
Okay.
Well, that, okay. Yes, sir.
You've got to watch your math with him.
I know it.
I know it. Okay, at this point, I'll now open the public hearing, and is the applicant present and wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address and ZIP code.
Good evening. My name is Harold Bernadzickowski. I represent Vertical Bridge Development and Verizon Wireless. The address is 6095 Marshley Drive, Suite 300, Elk Ridge, Maryland 21075.
And I'm sorry, for our clerk, could you spell your last name, please?
Sure.
Cool. Thank you.
So briefly, just to start, I did want to clarify, the leased area that Vertical Bridge is under with the property owner is a 75 by 75-foot area. We're only proposing to construct a 50 by 50, which would be 2,500 square feet, so there's probably just an extra zero left off in terms of that tabulation. So we're not planning to fully construct the 75 by 75. That would only be if necessary to accommodate future carriers' equipment, if the 50 by 50 isn't large enough for that. As far as the conditions, we're perfectly okay with, in agreement with the staff report. The ANSI standards, we typically just don't have the mechanical or the structural specifications for the monopole at this time. Those usually are obtained and submitted with our building permit application, so I think that's the only reason why we had proposed it as that way, that we will comply with, that I just don't have that documentation at this moment. As far as the generator, it is a standby generator. It is just for power outages or severe weather incidents. It's an FCC requirement now that all the carriers have those to back up their facilities. And it would basically be toggled on for a half-hour test period about once a week, typically a Tuesday or Wednesday around 10 o'clock. Beyond that, I don't have a whole lot to offer beyond what Mr. Craig had provided in the staff report, other than to say that this location ended up being selected as a culmination of about a two-to-three-year search. We had tried several other properties along Tyler Street and did not work out as far as executing a lease with the landowners. We'd even approached the newspaper property at the end of Bellman Drive, and that did not work out either. And this property actually ended up being probably the best one, just by the sheer fact that it has a forested area on it in which we can place the tower to provide some buffering. Most of the other sites are, have very little to no forest area, so although the forest won't screen the entirety of the monopole, the fact that you can provide some good buffering, you know, for the lowest 80 feet of it, is an optimal condition. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you. Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much. And anyone wishing to speak to the application, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address and ZIP code, and you have five minutes to speak. Anyone? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Bates. My name is Paul Milstead, 1350 Bellman Road, 22401. I'm the owner of the property there. And I'm opposed to the proposed tower for several different reasons. My biggest concern with the tower, with being a monopole, they don't have, like, with the guide wires, that area is very susceptible, and I would almost, you know, it would seem to me it's in a wetlands area, as far as the soil. My neighbor, for many years, the sneege farm brought our property, and I can tell you that many times they had sunk many pieces of equipment on that area. The other part that I have a problem with it, it's a detraction to the property. I've been on both sides of it. We had a, we had a tenant in Spotsylvania, and we erected a communications tower for them back, probably about 20 years ago. We had several different suites that were available. I know we, as we rented that one, it was a big deterrent to the other building that we had built. A lot of people have a, you know, it could be a misconception. They think there is some type of loss, maybe some type of radiation loss from towers. I'm sure they've done studies. I don't think anybody's got anything solid to that, but it's still a stigmatism to a lot of people that they see that, that they'd rather not be located close to that. But the big thing is that we tried to erect a tower. We moved into the Battlefield Park late 80s. We've been there for about over 30 years. We tried to put up a two-way communication tower, late 80s. It was approximately, I believe, 80 to 85 feet. We went through the Planning Commission, and basically, we would have communication with our service vehicles. It came back, I guess it got shot down in the planning stages from the National Park side. They said it was the where, the location, that it would, you know, detract from that area, and of course, we never, we didn't pursue it anymore. But just if you could, just take that into consideration. I know there's large parcels of property down there, and I know that communication, you know, towers are a necessity. They're, you know, everywhere you go, everybody's using a cellphone now, but... But for different locations within the park, you have higher areas where it's drier. Maybe keep that in consideration. And also, you know, there's way to disguise towers now, as opposed to just being a, the pole. You can, the one on Route 3, I believe, looks like a tree. Doesn't look like a great tree, but it's a, you know, it's something just to consider. But just if you could, just taking, you know, into effect with the other property portions around there, you've still got a large parcel of land down there that you really could do something great with. I talked with Mr. Craig earlier this morning. I know when we first moved in, they were saying that they were going to extend Belman Road to Shannon Drive. That's been in the works for some time. And, you know, sometime if, in your, in your grand scheme of planning, you know, sometimes if you were able to put a tower like on a corner somewhere to where it would blend in better, and out of the site of, you know, I think Mayfield is directly across us, you know, across from us, you've got the Spotsylvania Industrial Park, which kind of backs up to that on Shannon, back towards where UPS is currently located. You know, so like, if you kind of, you know, put it in a different area, it would probably blend in better. But of course, you know, I'm, I'm sure that the, the park service will probably weigh in as well. I know they did for us. But if you could just please keep that in consideration, I really would, would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millstead. Anyone else wishing to speak to the application? Does the applicant have a desire to respond to any of that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, I would close the public hearing on this item. What is the will of the commission? Or any discussion? Must be some will.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as a procedural matter, if I may, there are two resolutions in front of the commission. The first is for the commission to adopt, and that is, it is your determination whether or not the application is conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, that's the commission's resolution, that's the first one in your packet. Then the second one is our standard draft resolution for city council, and that's the question that calls for the commission's recommendation. So, it might be helpful if you take those questions in order.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, whether you wanted to have two different votes, one on the substantial conformance and one on the special use permit. But before we get there, any, any discussion?
I'd like to answer, or get an answer to the questions he asked about, is it a wetlands area?
Uh, no, sir. In, in your packet, there was an environmental analysis provided. There is a wetland in the area, but it, it's not on the site where this is proposed.
And then what about the possibility of putting something like a, a tree, like on Route 3?
Well, you all could certainly make that recommendation. It's, it's an interesting consideration. Sometimes, one thought is that the, the tower itself looks better than the fake tree. But I do understand why people don't want to look at towers and would rather look at something else, so. But that would be up to you all to propose as a condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, or to recommend approval of the first motion stating that the proposed telecommunications tower in the Battlefield Industrial Park is substantially in accord with the 2015 comprehensive plan.
I second that.
I'm sorry, okay. And I was, I was looking here at the, the resolutions, is the, yeah, the first one, I believe, that's in there is the substantial conformance. And that is your motion on the substantial conformance? And motion has been made to second, and seconded to recommend to council that this communication tower application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Is there any discussion on that? Ms. Dooley?
Again, the, the comp plan determination does belong to the commission. So, this is a resolution that you would be adopting for yourselves. And as Mr. Craig mentioned, it's a, it's a factor in your special use permit consideration, but the first resolution is before the planning commission for adoption.
So, let me, let me amend my motion.
I stand corrected.
I'd like to move for approval of resolution number, I don't have a number on here, but the resolution approving the proposed telecommunications tower as being substantially in accord with the 2015 comp plan.
Right. And seconded.
Seconded.
Just a question, please, Mr. Chairman. Because I want to go back to what the city's attorney just said. So, in essence, if the commission accepts that it is substantially within, this tower is substantially within conformance, then that's almost an acceptance that the second aspect, it alleviates a lot of the questions for the second aspect. Correct?
That's a good point. The two questions overlap. First question technically is a standalone, does the application conform to the comp plan? That's your determination. The second question before you on the special use permit has two basic criteria. The first is conformance with the comp plan, and the second is adverse impacts and is it otherwise appropriately designed, sighted, et cetera. So, the second question, the second criteria for the SUP, is a little bit more fine grained, more detail oriented, you're looking much more closely at the design, et cetera, and adverse impacts. The first one being a little bit more purely on a concept or plan basis, is this where the comp plan envisions a tower would go? And Mr. Craig, if, if you have a better way of saying that?
Yeah, the first is general, the second one is more specific. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my support for the first one was I did feel that it was in substantial conformance. It's in a similar location as to what was recommended in the comprehensive plan, same general area, and as staff has stated, it would comply with the UDO requirements. So, I don't see any reason why that would not be in conformance of the 2015 comprehensive plan.
Any other discussion? If not, will please cast your vote on the substantial conformance resolution. Six to zero, the motion passes. And now we'll go to the second part of the special use permit application, which is the other resolution that's in your packet. And is there any discussion or a motion on that?
So, I would motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the special use permit for the telecommunications tower in the Battlefield Industrial Park, based off of what we've already done and heard.
And, Ms. Ham, does that have conditions with it? This is your motion.
Not as it is-
In the, in the staff report-
You have to go back to the staff report.
Right, the staff report has, has two conditions.
I would, I would also add to that motion, Mr. Chairman, development of the telecommunications tower shall be in accordance with its application for special use permit dated 19 December 2016, including plans entitled Vertical Bridge Site Number, USVA 5043, Site Name Mary's Heights, Project Location 1398 Belman Road, Fredericksburg, Virginia 22401, Project Type New Build, 150 feet, H Monopole, dated December 6, 2016. Then number two is, the telecommunications tower shall comply with ANSI, EIA, TIA, that 222, structural steel standards. So, that would be the full motion.
Okay. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to support that, this motion. I understand about the concern about the appearance of it, and that is a valid concern, but at, at the same time, I think it's also, there's a, an equally positive spin on it, located in an industrial park, improved cell service, and the fact that it's already been contemplated in the comp plan to have a cell tower somewhere in that area. There are cell towers in commercial districts. There's one in the middle of Central Park that used to be a, you could see it straight up, and, and a lot of people drive by it now and realize it's behind stuff, even though it's tall. So, I am going to support it, and I, I, I think it's a good location and a good project.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just add, I, I'm going to support this. However, it concerns me that, that there isn't more screening required for a tower like this, particularly whereas here, you have a site, you have a 55 acre parcel, and yet they are only leasing a postage stamp on it. And, and then soon we may have no trees around it and no screening whatsoever. It's true that, you know, you, you see poles all the time that have nothing around them. So, I mean, that's, it's not certainly unprecedented, but I think that we should have more concern for the appearance of these things and their impacts on, on the neighborhood. And I don't know, there's nothing in our ordinance now or standards that would require more extensive landscaping for a project like this, is there, Mr. Craig?
Uh, no, sir. Not, not as currently written.
I mean, I think that's something that maybe the, the commission ought to consider, perhaps not on this application, but in the future, about screenings for this. I mean, there, there is a whole section in there on towers, and, and that ordinance was, was written years ago with the idea in mind that we would limit the places that they could be placed in the city. And, and there was, that they were listed as the preferred sites. This is not one of the preferred sites. And so, it seems to me that it, it might make sense if, if an applicant is coming in for one of these towers that is not at one of the recommended sites, that they should have to do additional screening for it. Because what could be done here, it would be very simple to just lease a little larger area that's already wooded apparently, and they could just leave it like that. So, I think that's just something for us to think about in, in the future. So, any, any other discussion? If not, please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item five on the agenda, I believe. You're right, this is number six on the agenda. And the, this is CPCR 201701. The City of Fredericksburg proposes to establish a new surface parking lot at 700 Williams Street. That's GPIN 779-94-9444, which is on the southwest corner of William and Barton Streets. The question before the commission is if the approximate location, character, and extent of the parking lot is substantially in accord with the 2015 comprehensive plan, per the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2232. The city proposes to lease this site from its owner for a period of one year, with a potential for renewal terms. The site is in the commercial downtown zoning district. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you. As you noted, under the Code of Virginia, no new public facility, as well as the city's code, no new public facility may be constructed unless or until the general location or approximate location, character and extent thereof, has been submitted to and approved by the planning commission as being substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. The city manager negotiated a one-year renewable lease with Williams Square LLC for the existing parking lot at 700 Williams Street. The proposed annual cost of this lease is $23,500, and with it, the city would like to establish a public parking lot at this location. City council subsequently approved Resolution 17-13 on February 14, authorizing the city manager to execute the lease with the property owner, and referred the proposal to the planning commission for its determination of whether or not the public parking lot is in substantial conformance with the 2015 comprehensive plan. As you noted, the property is zoned commercial downtown, and is developed with the existing parking lot containing approximately 80 parking spaces with one entrance from William Street. It's the location of the former, of the parking lot that supported the former Freelance Star, which has subsequently moved to the Central Park Corporate Center last year. This location is, is nearby to Liberty Town Art Studio and commercial offices on the east. Maury Commons and Maury Stadium is to the south, and a single-family residence exists to the west. There is mature landscaping on the west and southern boundaries to buffer the parking lot from the existing residential uses. The location, again, previously provided parking for the Freelance Star. It is now mostly unused, and the city is saying it would like to temporarily use this lot to support its commercial downtown businesses and residents. The comprehensive plan does address policies and initiatives for transportation, including parking in the land use planning area seven downtown. It recognizes that to be successful, the developed areas of the city require vehicle access and some level of parking, and that the city's challenge is to manage its parking to meet the demands, both of commercial and residential uses, while addressing the community's functionality and safety. Specifically, the Transportation Chapter III identifies Policy 10, which says that the city should develop structured parking in selected areas to support development and redevelopment goals, especially in the downtown. It also notes Initiative 11, which challenges the city to continue to explore strategies to reduce conflicts between competing parking needs, especially within residential areas, which this is a boarder to. Also, in land use area, planning area seven downtown, two opportunities are noted. One is to evaluate parking needs and develop appropriate strategies, such as shared parking, that provide for the continued viability of downtown Fredericksburg, as well as furthering its goals for growth and development, and to improve the appearance of municipal parking lots and enhance the pedestrian connections between those parking areas and downtown activity areas. The comprehensive plan also talks about adaptive reuse, specifically on page 162, and it says that the city should enhance its downtown parking areas to serve center-city amenities, or to provide center-city amenities, which can attract investors, residents, and visitors to the downtown through attention to mixed uses and flexible parking requirements. And what it says is basically, we need to consider providing parking areas that other business owners and residents can fill with, with visitors and customers. So, as you know, public parking is heavily sought after in the Williams Street corridor by residents, visitors, and business owners, especially in the evenings, on weekends, and during sporting events at Maury Stadium. The existing parking lot is located within the city center on Williams Street, near restaurants, shops, offices, and the James Monroe Athletic Field at Maury Stadium, Liberty Town Art Studio, and residential uses. It's connected to downtown activity areas through a network of existing sidewalks and crosswalks. The 2015 comprehensive plan recognizes the competing needs of commercial and residential uses and challenges the city to explore strategies to reduce such conflicts. Additionally, more parking is needed to support continued growth and development in the downtown as envisioned by the plan. While the city continues to develop plans for permanent structured parking, this temporary use of the facility at 700 Williams Street will provide an interim solution for parking relief. Staff recommends approval of the resolution that's included in your package, finding that the public parking lot that is proposed at 700 Williams Street is in substantial accordance with the city's 2015 comprehensive plan. Ms. Dooley is here representing the applicant, if you have any questions for the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you have any questions for staff, city staff?
Yes, I do. I was wondering, the city will be operating this parking lot, correct?
That's correct.
So, will there be like, two-hour parking? Or was there going to be all-night parking? Or how are they going to regulate that?
I think it will be managed similarly to the Charles Street parking lot, where there will be signs that will manage the duration of time. I'm not exactly clear what the plan is for this lot, but I believe it to be similar to what's there at the Charles Street.
But there will be some restrictions, so people won't park overnight and-
That's my guess.
Commuters type things?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dooley, you have any comments?
Mr. Freeling did ask me to apologize to the commission. He wasn't able to join you tonight, and so he told me to ride Marnie's coattails and do the best I could, and that his brilliance in negotiating the lease would probably be self-evident, and this would be easy. The parking lot that we leased was paved and was basically ready to go. It had been a parking lot for the Freelance Star, and had up a fence and the paving and everything. So, when the lease was signed, and I'll tell you, the lease does have a termination clause, so that if there's a negative finding on the comp plan, then it can be canceled. But when the lease was signed, the staff was ready to go. They have put some signs up for public parking. They have designated it for public parking already, and it is open to the public. I believe that at this time, it is open 24 hours a day, but that would be subject to the city's decisions, you know, as time goes by. It is a one-year lease with options to renew or to terminate early. It's just a sort of an opportunistic occasion that arose, which is so true so often with real estate deals. If there's some real estate available in a place, place where you need it, that's suited to a use that you- it, that's suited to a use that you need, then it was a good idea, I think, to jump on it, make it available to the public, because while that structured parking is our long-term goal, that structured parking is still in the planning stages, and it's still under work, and the parking need is very real today. But I believe at this time, to be direct to your question, I believe it is open 24 hours a day.
Dr. Adson?
I assume that the city will assume responsibility for clearing existing and non-existent snowstorms?
Yes, it will.
And also liability for any accidents, damage, or any incidents that happen in there. Same kind of liability that they have in the city garage, I guess.
Yes, we are assuming all of that as the person leasing it, as the entity leasing it.
Marnie, I just want to make sure I understand. So, the Comprehensive Plan Compliance Review is required by our code.
State code.
State code, but it doesn't change a permanent designation of this parcel for parking in any way. It's reuse, it's change of use, would follow your, the comp plan and the zoning ordinance. This is just simply allowing it to be used for public purposes, for public parking purposes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the opportunity for the Planning Commission to weigh in on new public facilities, to see whether they are consistent with our comp plan. Ideally, we would consider this before the lease was signed, not afterwards, but I understand in the real estate business, you sometimes have to do that. So, do I hear a, oh, I'm sorry, we have to open this for the public hearing. Is there anybody here wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address and zip code.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeremy Harrison. I live at 900 Barton Street at Maury Commons. I've lived there 10 years since they've been actually renovated. I'm actually 100% behind this parking lot opening up for public parking, trust me. It sure beats all the newspapers and all the riggity-rack that I dealt with all these years. I'm sorry the Freelance Star had to move somewhere else. However, the one concern I do have is the tree line, bush line, where the fence is down Barton Street. I've gone over that fence and picked up a lot of garbage. I've also seen homeless, unfortunately, living under those trees. So, I would like to suggest that there is a guideline under those trees, so people that are parking in that lot can see clearly through to Maury Commons, Day Street, I'm sorry, Day Street is the public street in back of that fence. That's also another public street. I'm just thinking of safety, and that's a really a big priority. You know, my master bedroom leads out on the southwest corner of Maury on the third floor, looking down. I can see Sedona Tap House, Amelia Squares, Confederate Cemetery, everything out on that corridor. But yet, I might think safety should be a priority. Something I just recently noticed, too, in the last couple of days, were some cars left behind with for-sale signs. And I think that concerns me as well, only because that's what happened on the corner of Barton and William, with a doctor's office that just recently left that building. And I'd like not to see cars, you know, left there overnight with for-sale signs. That's really not setting a good standard when it's free parking. And going on to Barton Street, realistically, we're the only street there now that I'm aware of that does not have a residential permit sign for that small little street of ours outside of Maury. It does now exist all the way around Hurt Camp Park down to the War Memorial. So, I'd like to request, I don't know if this is the evening to request that, but I'd like to have a request for permit signage on Barton Street, so people are not using Barton Street as an easy way out when we're coming home from our jobs late night. That street's pretty full. But I do support it. I think it's a great idea. It will take hundreds of cars off our street on a weekly basis, for good reasons, for great business to our city, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Anyone else wishing to speak to the resolution?
Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Hamilton Palmer, 1500 Caroline Street. My question on this would be, what is the difference between a public parking in this area? And if I were to go, would I be able to put a private parking lot in there under the same conditions as the public parking on there? That's all, just a question.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the resolution? If not, I'll declare the public hearing portion of this closed. Are there any other questions or discussion by the commission? Any other questions for the city staff? If not, it's the will of the commission.
Mr. Chair, see if Marnie can answer it.
Yes. So, in response to Mr. Palmer's question, parking lots are permitted in the CD Commercial Downtown Zoning District. If it were an existing lot, that use could be maintained regardless of its private or public ownership. But if somebody wanted to install a brand-new parking lot, either public or private, you know, we would evaluate it with a site plan and making sure it met all of our current ordinances.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, in response to the previous comment regarding parking limits on Barton Street, that is handled through the Department of Public Works, and you would contact them, 372-1023, and they can explain the process to you.
Any discussion, or anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Compliance Review for the proposed public parking facility.
Is the resolution that's in your packet?
And I have a couple of comments that go along with that.
A motion's been made?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay.
A couple of comments. I did think that Mr. Harris's comments about safety, for-sale signs, hours of parking, all those things are all very good comments, and I'd like for, I guess, staff to report back to us on that particular issue. I mean, I'm going to support this, but my understanding is it's going to follow along the same lines of what was done the prior parking lot, which did have those requirements on there. You know, my support of the compliance review is that this property be handled the same way, and that the police department would also look into some of the SEP TED requirements for safety in the parking lot, which I think is part of the, typically what they do. So, with that.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve the substantial conformance resolution as been made and seconded? Please cast your votes. Motion passes six zero. Okay. We'll now move on to item number seven, I believe it is, on the agenda, public hearing, UDO TA 2017-03. The City of Fredericksburg proposes an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 72-6, nonconformities. The amendment would permit the reconstruction of existing electrical transmission lines, including wires, cables, support structures, and other equipment. When the proposed reconstruction is substantially similar to the existing transmission line, the height of proposed structures and other facilities does not exceed 20% of the existing facility. The proposed structures are within 60 feet of the existing structures, and the transmission line remains located in the existing easement. The effect of the amendment would be to authorize administrative approval of Dominion Virginia Powers' proposed rebuild of Line 47. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Bates. If I could have the computer, please?
Okay.
As stated, the issue before the Planning Commission tonight is a proposed ordinance amendment regarding the reconstruction of existing electrical transmission lines running through the City of Fredericksburg. And what started this, Dominion Powers is in the process of rebuilding Line 47, and the two graphics on the screen give you kind of the big picture of what's going on with Line 47. On the left is a map that shows Line 47 as it runs from Hanover County through Caroline, Spotsylvania County, into the city of Fredericksburg, where it terminates at the Palatine substation. That line was built in 1957. It has reached the end of its operable life. Dominion is in the process of rebuilding this line in the southern localities that it traverses. They have already gotten their approvals through some of those counties. They are now working with Spotsylvania and us here in the city on the proper permitting path. They do propose to rebuild the existing structures that make up the line, and that's what this second graphic illustrates. It shows the difference on the left of the existing structures, and on the right, circled in green, of the proposed structures. And just generally, the existing structures are wood, they're H-frame structures, and the proposed structures would be steel, but they would remain H-frame structures. The approximate average height of the existing structures on the left is 60 feet. The approximate average height of the proposed structures on the right is 66 feet. Did want to show this, may not be showing up very well on the screen. It was in the packet as well. It's an elevation plan. One of the reasons why there is a differential in the height is that there are significant differences in topography. This is a linear transmission project, so as it goes through the city, and you can think about looking at the line when you cross under it, going up the hill in Lafayette Boulevard, it goes all the way down that hill. So, keeping the conduits, the conductors at a certain height, but having to shift a modernized structure 20 feet north or south within the easement, you can see how there is a significant difference in the height of the pole. So, I did want to bring that to everybody's attention. I think it's a useful tool, helping show some of the logic behind what we're going to get through with you all this evening. Including the Line 47, there are actually five transmission lines running through the City of Fredericksburg. On this screen, tying into the Palatine substation from the south are Lines 2090, and that's shown in the orange color. That operates at 230 kilovolts. Line 47 is in the blue. That operates at 115 kilovolts, and those numbers are important. Tying into the Palatine substation from the north, Line 2083, and that is shown in the pink, and the Line 2157, which is shown in red, both operate at 230 kilovolts. Line 29, which here is a lime-green color, operates at 115 kilovolts. Line 47 and any other transmission line is defined in the UDO as a major utility in the UDO. Major utilities are only permitted by special use permit in the light and general industrial districts. The other transmission lines, well, Line 47, first off, it traverses 62 properties in four different residential and two different commercial zoning districts. So, if you can see the kind of faded colors on the map, you'll see yellows, you'll see light blues, you'll see browns, you'll see pinks and reds. That's what Line 47 crosses. The zoning districts in which this use is permitted are the grays, which I don't see that Line 47, well, Line 47 may cross some I-1. It's a similar story with the other transmission lines. They generally go through medical campus, residential, commercial zoning districts. As such, these five transmission lines are considered nonconforming uses under today's zoning ordinance. For the three lines operating at higher, the higher 230 kilovolt, kilovolts, it's a moot point. Any transmission line carrying that more than 137 kilovolts are regulated by the State Corporation Commission, and as part of that regulation process, they're exempt from the provisions of local zoning ordinances, and it makes sense. These are major transmission facilities. These are not distribution lines that feed your home. These, like we showed on this very first slide, are the lines that are carrying significant power throughout the region and then being transformed for distribution locally. However, the two lines, Line 47 and Line 29, are 115 kilovolts. They are not regulated in that way by the State Corporation Commission. They are subject to local zoning approvals. So, all this to explain that we are proposing an ordinance amendment to handle, one, the reconstruction of Line 47 as proposed, but it would also apply to this other line in the city. And the purpose of this ordinance amendment is twofold. First, we recognize that the safe and efficient transmission of electricity, especially at the regional level, is a critical need for our city. Power companies serving the city need to be able to modernize and upgrade their infrastructure, and they need to be able to do it in a timely manner. Secondly, citizens along the path of existing transmission lines do require some assurance that this modernization, that the upgrade of the facilities is not going to dramatically change or impact their property. And if it is going to, then they need some assurance that there will be the proper public hearing process. So, we've been working, Ms. Dooley and I, with Dominion Power, in creating this ordinance that hopefully accomplishes both of those, and I'll take you through the three things here. It would permit the reconstruction of the regional transmission line by right, in accordance with the following. It would permit the replacement of wooden structures with steel structures. It would limit the variability in structure height, and that is a provision to protect neighborhoods and commercial areas so that they have a reasonable expectation of what the change will be. The variable that we have set is that the mean height of the structures may vary by 15%. One structure may be 20% taller than another, but the mean of all the structures would be limited to 50%, 15% difference, as written today. And the third provision is that it does permit the movement of structures within the existing easement up to 60 feet, but no portion of the transmission facility may be built outside of the existing easement, as worded today. If a proposed rebuild cannot meet these standards, it would require a full special exception public hearing process. So, there is still protection in the case where there is a major reconstruction envisioned or required that is not subject to the State Corporation Commission review. As such, we recommend that you all recommend approval of this amendment to the city council, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Make sure to have any questions for Mr. Craig.
Yeah, real quick, how did the 15%? How did you come up with that?
If I could go back to the computer. Dominion Power put this elevation plan together, and I apologize if the quality's so bad. We've been trying to reproduce this in several documents, but it's basically an elevation plan showing the difference of the proposed and existing structures. So, we started with what we thought was reasonable, and then we studied the lines to ensure that it was going to cover what was proposed by Dominion, and they matched, and this 15% is that number.
But, and, I mean, why not 20%? Why not 10%? What, I'm missing that factor.
Well, you know, it's, that's a good question. 10%? There are, I think, I'll have to go back and re-describe kind of the process we used, because that's the logic that I've got for how we came to that number. We took what we saw, what they proposed as their mean difference, and then we went and studied it to make sure that there was enough in there that we weren't going to create a situation where we had to come back and revise the ordinance again when they want to redo Line 29, and there's a 15% difference.
And so, the request for the elevation, like you're saying, you're trying to, what's the advantage of dealing with that elevation?
The advantage of...
Again, I mean, I'd assume the heights are being changed because of the elevations going through there.
Yeah, and Dominion Power is here to answer technical questions. There may be certain modernization requirements for why one structure's different from another. And another issue that we've got around the city that's, will be corrected, is that there are potential conflicts. I mean, this line was built in 57, so there are issues where you've got a major transmission line, and then you've got a signal at a traffic intersection, and there's a potential conflict currently. So, Dominion Power needs to raise things up a little bit so that people working on the signal, and this is an issue that is being worked on right now, don't have to ground themselves to work on the signal, because they're within that magnetic-type field around the power line. So, there's more factors than just topography, but topography is the easiest one to illustrate, and it makes sense, once you start looking at the, kind of the dramatic nature of the landscape.
Okay. And I, yeah, I'll wait for their answers.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for staff? I have several, Mr. Craig. One of the things that I really wondered about here is, why is this being done as a text amendment? It seems to me that if a power company wants to modify its power line, it's going to be affecting a lot of residences all along that line, that a special exception or special use permit process would be superior to a text amendment, so that each time this happened, people would be getting notice who live adjacent to it and have an opportunity to speak at a public hearing like tonight. But most people would never have any idea that a text amendment is going to affect their property.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah, it's a good question. Dominion Power has done public notification on this line rebuild, and I'll let them speak to the extent of the public notification, and I've seen Mr. O'Toole at one of the public hearings. This has been going on for a while. We did look at the different processes that this could be required to go through. One of them was a special exception process. Dominion Power has an easement. They are not the property owner. The primary concern with the special exception process is that in order to modernize our electrical system, you're reliant on 62 independent property owners to sign an application to, to be the applicant, essentially, or empower the applicant for a special exception public hearing process. That is the main issue that we saw with going through the special exception process. So, and you're shaking your head, I'm not sure what you're thinking.
I mean, I don't know why a less C can't be the applicant.
Even a less C, like, like with what we saw with Vertical Bridge, they require the owner to sign the form saying they are, they are authorized to get zoning approval on my property. And this is a great question. I mean, and this is one that could potentially impede or end up in, you know, a legal issue, and I know Ms. Dooley's ready to answer this question as well, so don't let me, don't let me steal your thunder here. I think I'm explaining it well, but this was the primary concern that we had.
Ms. Dooley, you have anything to add?
I would agree with that, and I did talk to Dominion Virginia Council. You know, the applicant for a special exception has, or for any zoning map amendment, has to be the owner, the owner's agent, or the contract purchaser of the property. And we did have a Supreme Court case out of Virginia, I'm going to say 2015, where there was a problem with the ownership status of the applicant. And even though a special use permit had been granted and been renewed once, they went back in time and said, oh, actually, you didn't have any authority to apply for it in the first place, and the SUP was declared null and void. That was out of Hanover County. So we were really concerned about identifying the correct applicant, and what Dominion Virginia Power said is, we've got like 65 easements. We're not less Cs, we are easement holders, and some of these easements were taken 60 years ago, and they may or may not authorize us to be an agent for purposes of zoning applications, and probably not. So, it was sort of a technical question there, but then on a practical level as well, it's an existing power line. It's an existing power line that's going to be modernized with a new existing distribution system, and it is subject to notification procedures through Dominion Virginia Power. People are having an opportunity to discuss it, and it, you know, it would be a special exception, I suppose, but it'd be also a little challenging, I think, to address from a purely zoning standpoint. It's something that would ordinarily be exempt from local zoning review. It's not really well suited to local zoning review, and is existing.
But there are ways that the city could deal with an issue like that. For example, for this, for this text amendment, the city could provide personal notice to each property owner who's adjacent to this power line, or who has the underlying fee simple interest in it, so that they would know that, that we're about to do something that really may affect them. I'm just concerned about people not receiving adequate notice on something like this. My other question has to do, and, 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 Mr. Craig, maybe you can answer this for me, is, is part of the, the text amendment is, is saying that, oh, God, I can't read The location of the new structures may vary from the existing locations by up to 60 feet, so long as the new structures are located within existing easements. So this, this, this right-of-way that they have now currently through the city, it's for one line or two, two lines?
For two.
Two lines.
Mostly. There's a portion that's one.
What's the width of that?
It's shown as 140 feet.
180 feet.
180 feet, okay.
I believe that's right.
And so generally, if you have two lines in there, in this generally, two different lines within the right-of-way?
The exhibit kind of shows.
Right. And, and so, what my question is, is if you're able to move those, the current poles up to 60 feet within that right-of-way, you can move it right over to the edge of the easement, right next to somebody's house.
That's, that's a good question, and, and I'd like for Dominion Power to address that. In some discussion that we've had with them, there are offsets that they have to have from the edge of an easement. So if that is an adequate level of protection, I'll let them answer that.
How did you come up with 60 feet?
60 feet was mainly to address the north and south alignment of the structures, and that's what their proposal is. We have construction documents that they proposed that show they're going to move structures north and south to optimize, you know, where they're going.
Longitudinally.
Yes, sir. There you go. That's the engineering term. Longitudinal. They're not going to move latitudinal towards the sides. True to their diagram that they've got here, I believe that there's an electrical code standard, I think, but I'll let Dominion Power clarify that, and if that's something that you feel needs to be clarified in the language of the amendment, I would understand that.
Mr. Chair, to add to that, I also, one of my areas that I'd like to have addressed by Dominion Power is, there are OSHA standards as far as operating adjacent to overhead lines, and there have been rare instances, or instances I'm aware of, where a line, because of where it is located in an easement, actually imposes restrictions outside of the easement because of OSHA requirements, where a property owner who may have given an easement is then restricted from some type of either use or operation of equipment or, or construction outside of it. So my concern, I'm not sure if it's with this type of line, if it's 20 feet or if it's larger than that, I, I would not want to see an adjustment in the line which could have an impact outside of the easement, even though the line itself is in the easement, if that makes sense. So that's something I'd like to have someone address.
Okay, any, any other questions for Mr. Craig? If not, we'll open the public hearing, and the applicant, I guess there are really not an applicant in this situation, it's, but, but, so we'd open it to any, any person interested in speaking to the text amendment proposal. Please come forward, state your name, address.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Hamilton Palmer, 1500 Caroline Street. I'm, I'm not sure why you'd want to take the citizen input away from this process. Mr. Page, I agree with you. It doesn't, you know, a text change is one way to get around that. Staff does a good job managing applications and commercial plans, but there's nothing like a second set of eyes, especially on a project that is adjacent to your home or business. Dominion does a good job of managing their resources, and I might be in agreement that they need to maintain and upgrade their facilities. But how many of you are aware of Dominion's OSMOS reports? And when asked for a copy of the OSMOS report, the city provided, "We have no other records or information concerning Dominion's OSMOS survey." Although Dominion operates under a franchise agreement within the city, the agreement does not require Dominion to provide copies of their surveys, studies performed on their infrastructure in the city, and I can tell you that there's some issues with that. Current conflicts, Mr. Craig, you said that there's current conflicts with the line and our traffic signals. I'd like to know what those conflicts are. And there are other conflicts within the city, too. Somebody mentioned "subject to notification," but why aren't these existing conflicts subject to notification? Which brings me back around to the opening statement. Why would you want to take the citizen input out of this process? There's no need to amend the UDO, as Dominion can proceed by simply making application just like other owners, other easement holders can for these, these utilities. Yes, we do need to upgrade, or we may need to upgrade these facilities, but the citizens should have input in how that upgrade is done, and leaving out citizen input would be a In the report regulatory background, they talk about regulation by the State Corporation Commission supersedes local zoning review and approval. Yes, it does, but the SEC does not regulate zoning. And, and then they also, on this regulatory background, they say that the SEC declined oversight. That's because they don't regulate zoning. Zoning is, is given, that right is given to the city and, which is passed down, you know, to Mr. Craig, you're the zoning administrator, and to the citizens to have input. And if this were to go through, the citizens would not have input in here. Let's see, you know, my question is, is this circumventing the SUP process, and, you know, and if so, could somebody else do the same thing? Mr. Orning, you mentioned OSHA in there, and the issues with OSHA, and about power lines being close and arcing. Well, actually, it's probably more so to the National Electric Safety Code, and SEC doesn't regulate National Electric Safety Code either. And there are issues in this town where power lines are closer than 10 feet to structures that can arc and can harm someone. Some of those issues are outlined in the OSMOS report, and I would recommend that you get a copy of the OSMOS report, and then the next time that this city writes a, an agreement or a licensing agreement with Dominion, make sure that those reports, that they can provide city staff and the citizens the reports that they have knowledge of. I think that would be very important. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else like to speak to this text amendment?
Good evening, my name is Stephen Brooks with Dominion Virginia Power, 701 East Carey Street, Richmond, Virginia, 23219. I just wanted to follow up on some of the commission's questions and also Mr. Palmer's, if I could. With me tonight, though, I've got Les O'Donnell, project manager, and Brandon Patterson, one of our line engineers on staff with Dominion Power. Primarily wanted to recapture that the, we did have an open house at Jameson Road High School, I believe it was 2015. That is a normal means of, of public input. We'd do that if we were to have a, an SEC type of project, such that we could have that input, we'd make the citizens aware of the project. We did that at the time because we really thought that we would be going forward with an SEC application. That turned out not to be the case, and then conversations commenced with staff here, including Ms. Dooley and Mr. Craig. From that point, just a little bit of project background, though, some of what I believe is the reason why we're in this position with the project line, so far as the development of the infrastructure that Dominion owns and operates, this line, as Mr. Craig outlined, was 1950s-era infrastructure. In 1989, I believe it was, there was the parallel line that was built alongside and in the, the shared corridor. In that time, Dominion then took what is now what we know as line 47, excuse me, to 115,000 volt capacity. That's, in my opinion, how we got to where it's considered a non-conforming use. It operated under an SEC license previously, and in that 1989 application, I believe it was, to the SEC, that's where it became an, a use item covered then by the city. So just wanted to give that background real quick. Mr. O'Donnell here, will carry on with some other items. You might have some comment on. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Dooley and Mike Craig and the staff for the support we've gotten so far. I'd like to say that I have been with Virginia Power for 40 years, and the last nine, I've been a project manager of projects like this. And this is probably one of the most mundane projects I've had. To the average public, it may, may not seem like it, but there's so much going for us on this project. In Albemarle County, we were raising structures from 55 to 110 feet in our initial, we were doubling them. Here, on the average of the entire 34 miles, it's only gone up four, four and a half feet. The structures are, are steel, as Mike mentioned, but they're weathered steel. They look like the rusty guardrail, they look like the wooden poles that are currently there. The longitudinal changes, although the, the text amendment offers 60, I believe in this particular case, it's more like...
More or less 10 to 15?
10 to 15 feet from where the existing structures are, and we strive to, to make them as close as we can, so that someone's been looking at a structure for 40 years, it's not much of a change because, because we do that. There's no concrete foundations for these, they're direct embedded in the ground, there's no concrete trucks. We're keeping at the same voltage that's been the entire time, 115 KV, which, which is a real plus, simplicity. Some of the other voltages require taller structures, double conductors per phase, we just have the single. So it's pretty much like you have today. So I just wanted to say that, and I'd also want to mention that we did have, we had two open houses. We had one in Hanover, one in Fredericksburg. We have a website that we keep, keep updated on our construction progress. The OSHA issue that came up, we always meet, satisfy the safety regulations that are required, and as Stephen pointed out, we treated this project from the beginning, and we continue to treat it as if we went through the State Corporation Commission with, with notice, with, well, the postcards when we rebuild each section, we give follow-up updates, the erosion and sedimentary control guidelines that we have, it's no different than we were dealing with the SEC. We do it to the best of possible, means possible. The signals that were mentioned were affected. We're raising a couple of structures to satisfy public works to help with that issue, and I heard Mr. Palmer mentioned about some close within 10 feet. Well, he may be referring to distribution circuits, which do, do have closer clearances. Our transmission lines are up there, they're, but they can have an effect, and we've accommodated that to satisfy staff, and also it added to our overall height increase a little bit by, by that, by that gesture. This is not a Walmart application, it's, it's difficult. As Ms. Dooley said, that there's, there's a lot of property owners, we have it by easement. This is a linear project, two and a half miles through the, through the city, or 2.3 miles, and there are 25 structures there. Caroline County, just to give you a representative, they have 157 structures, and as I told them when I spoke to their Board of Supervisors, this is, it's a pleasurable project for us, and I'm not saying that anyone wouldn't, you know, be unhappy with people coming tearing something down and rebuilding, but I'm proud of what we've done so far. And also, this is a joint effort, this text amendment plan with Spotsylvania County, and we were to meet with them this evening, they had a, a lot of flu bug, and they've moved this to April 5th, but they're taking the exact same tact that, that the town, that the city is, and it's, it's one to satisfy some of the concerns that Mike and Ms. Dooley have indicated, and that's, that's the approach we're taking. And I guess that's all I can think of for now. I appreciate your time. Stephen, or Brandon, do you have anything else?
Yeah, to the concerns about the, the movement, we generally are not going to move any closer to the right-of-way. There's guidelines for forest tree concerns, for trees growing out, they have to limb, they go through a, it's two or three, it's a cycle, and it's on a year, so many year basis. So, also, you might see some lateral movement because this was, line was built in the 50s, survey technology's a whole lot better now, so what, what would be put back up would be much straighter. Some, so I've, I've had instances where you built a line and there's a big U in it, and we're straightening it out. The topography, the change in height has to do with a whole lot more, it's real complicated, wire tensions. NESC guidelines for ground clearance, they've changed, they've gotten strong, more conservative over the years, things like insulation values, and we also have static wire, which is at the top, is for lightning protection, that, the clearances between that and the phase conductors have grown over the years for better operation. So that, is there, have I addressed everybody else's concerns, or is there any other technical questions?
Do commissioners have any questions for the, for Virginia Power?
I have a couple of questions. I happen to have the power line in my backyard, so...
There you go.
And I must admit, I think you've been very gracious. I've been there for 40 years, and it seems to be working fairly well. But some of the things do bother me, for instance, the wooden poles back there are, have been very adequate, and now you're going to put something back there that rusts, looks like heck. Is there anything else?
Is there anything else that you can do besides putting the steel poles that rust? And it's not just you, it's guardrails and other places in the, in the area that I just, it's just as ugly.
But, yeah, um, our stance, uh, generally in our transmission part, we do not put new wood poles up anymore. As, as far as I've been, I've been here almost five years, and I have never installed a brand-new wood pole.
And, and-
This, I have to-
Go ahead.
Uh, to, to his point, what I, and I really should have mentioned this.
He's speaking to the microphone.
Thank you. Sorry.
There are four or five, uh, delivery points off of this line in the course of the 34 miles. They're all Rappahannock Electric Co-op. One of them is called Woodpecker Delivery Point. Woodpeckers drill big holes in our poles, and that's one of the reasons we don't use wood anymore. And I, I don't want to, uh, disrespect you in any way, sir, but I'll tell you, I've been before meetings like this, like in the town of Leesburg and different places, this person likes galvanized, this person likes, likes the, uh, rust, the rusted steel they call Core Ten Weathered Steel. I mean, who do I satisfy? Uh, that's what we, that's what we use.
I used to work for Public Steel, and so I understand all those comments.
Okay, good.
But I just would, hoping there was something that was developed later on that wouldn't look so rusty and just-
Well, I under, I understand completely.
And that's, that's my point. Now, I, I'm not saying it's not better structurally. I understand all-
The, the coating, and you can help me too, it, it's designed by, by the way it's made, the surface has rust on it, but it rusts no further. It's, it really is to give you the brown look versus the shiny galvanized look.
I, I, I understand that, but I just-
I'm sorry. We, we do have galvanized poles, but we generally don't use those unless we're in a, uh, an area that was high contamination where we're worried about-
Well, if you'd like to put one in my backyard, I'd be happy to have one. Uh, the, the other question I had was, you talk about lateral movement and moving it closer to the easement side. Have you already designed these?
Yeah, the, the design-
You know exactly where each pole's going to go, right?
Yes, yes.
So, when I went to the public meeting, and my neighbor did too, we couldn't get that information. Of course, it was two years ago, and I understand that. And I was wondering, if you do have that information, that would be very helpful to put a lot of neighbors at, at rest, because most people didn't understand you're only moving one pole to begin with.
Yeah, and I, I can provide, you know, that information, too. At that time-
I would hope that possibly maybe as part of this resolution, that that could be at least given to the property owners, that you are going to do it and would be happy to come out and show them where they're going. So, it doesn't infringe upon getting much, any closer to the, the easement.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, like I said, the movement closer to even easement will only be in the case of, uh, when you have an angle structure to another angle structure, we're going to draw a straight line between the two. So, the older technology, sometimes they would get off a little bit, and you could have a four or five-foot swing, and they'd figure out they were off, and they would start moving it back. Uh, we use GPS technology, so I provide a GPS point, and it's, it's where it's supposed to be, so it's going to be straight. And so, compared to the old one, it might move a little bit, but it's not going to move tremendously. You won't see a lot of movement-
Right.
-uh, laterally. But longitudinally, we move forward and back, that's multiple reasons. We don't like to reuse the same pole for structural reasons.
Did I misunderstand you when you said you aren't going to move them more than about 15 feet?
For most, some move a little more than that, but on average, it's 10 to 15 feet.
So, you wouldn't be opposed to us changing to 60-foot?
Um, that, well, that, that's where it comes down to. You've got different things changed, light poles, things. We try to take it in effect if someone's got a fence coming across, and let's say it's up against the fence, well, I might need to move it across. And the way the terrain is, and it's a lot of times we have to go back with bigger wires because load goes up. We, we're thinking about the future. Um, so, it's a lot of play in there. So, sometimes you might need to go past 20, 25 feet. You might need to move because it might be a pond in front of you or something of that nature.
Well, we're giving you carte blanche. I mean, this is kind of, maybe there may be an exception or two, but if you can generally work within 20 feet instead of 60, that's a big change.
And-
That's my question. If you can do, then I would just as soon make an amendment to that if you're agreeable to it.
I, I appreciate your position. I think Mr. Craig was trying to outline, though, that this is to encapsulate the other 115 KV lines, so this would be a future casting. And yes, we have data now for this current project we're speaking to, which brought us to meet with everybody here tonight. I'm just trying to be, I guess, uh, I, I would suggest, though, that the draft, as it's been proposed, we've provided information, but the text itself was city-generated.
I understand.
Thank you, sir.
I, I have one last question that, uh, does concern me. Has there been any reported health issues from this particular voltage? And, uh, in our neighborhood, we've had a substantial amount of cancer incidents. And I was just curious if you've had any reports that you would like to share with us that possibly may positive or negatively address that issue.
What I can speak to is on our dom.com website, we do offer, uh, links to third-party providers of information on those studies as to your particular neighborhood. I, I can't speak to that.
Well, the power line in general, too, in our neighborhood, I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
But thank you for asking.
Any other, Dr. Gratz?
Um, yeah, the, uh, does this ordinance, uh, provide us with sufficient distinction between transmission facilities versus distribution facilities? Um, it'd be the transmission line, the big line on north-south there, but then you've got your distribution lines coming off of that. And I would think that maybe with the distribution lines, Pete, it would be more likely to affect individual neighborhoods, whereas the transmission line is already in existence, it's going up the road, um, you're just replacing what you already have. But, uh, does this ordinance, has this written sufficiently protect us?
Dr. Gratz, uh, if you look at the third line, exception permits the replacement, upgrade, and modernization of existing transmission lines. We're, we're very conscious of that distinction.
So, if somebody, if they came in and wanted to put in a distribution line, then that would be back to square one and traditional, uh, S U P probably, or whatever.
Well, I think distribution lines are generally exempt in the zoning ways. This is strictly about major transmission lines. And it's only, there are only two lines in the city currently. Uh, and they would be the only lines that are covered under this provision. So, it's, it's the line 47 to the south, and then line 29, which, which heads to the north. They are the only two lines that would be affected by this ordinance change.
Any other questions for, uh, Virginia Power?
The, uh, proposed, um, elevation changes, does, does that satisfy, I mean, does that help you guys out? I mean, or would you actually like this to have more variance where?
No, that, I mean, that's generally, uh, we needed something sufficient, um, to, for anything in the future, but generally, 15% should be more than that. Um, and there's times, um, when 15% might be tight, but then we'd have to look at things differently. Um, you always got to worry about height, and you've got to worry about movement, and it, it's a lot of variabilities in there, but-
And is it, is it from a performance standpoint, or is it more just, we use more line by going up and down?
It's a performance standpoint. We're always trying to get more out of less space because, uh-
Okay.
You're, you're constrained by the right-of-way. The land is what we have, so we're trying to do the best we can by staying as short as we possibly can in supplying reliable energy that-
Okay, thank you.
I had, I had several questions. Going back to the notice issue, it's, my understanding, now that you had public meetings, one you said at James Monroe in 2015?
Uh, it, it may have been 20, sorry, 2016.
Okay. And, but did I hear you say that, that at that time, this was an S C C project?
At that time, we had anticipated it to be so. Um, the, the scope seemed to fit that, and we did have a direct discussion with, uh, S C C council, with our council, Dominion Council. Uh, it was determined that it would fall under local ordinance, and that's, again, how it proceeded to-
So, anybody getting a notice of that in 2016 would have no idea that the city controlled anything about the project. Is that right?
At that time, we, we certainly had, we advertised, uh, I believe it was Freelance Star and also, uh, social media, digital media to notice about the project. And, um, we actually only yielded maybe 20 visitors at that time.
Maybe that's because they didn't know that the city had anything to do with the project.
Uh, yeah.
I, so, so even, even at that time, were individual property owners along the, the route of the lines, were they given individual notice?
Yes, sir.
I see.
Individual addressed stamped envelopes to them.
I see. Okay. Well, that's good. That's good. At least they knew that. Um, also, uh, going back to our 60-foot, moving, moving these lines 60 feet within the existing right-of-way. I would go back, since you all are saying that, that you're not anticipating, um, uh, a lateral movement of more than, what, what'd you say, 15, 20 feet?
No, that's laterally not much at all. May, maybe five, 10 feet at most, but longitudinally, 60 feet could, could happen.
So, that, that's why I would go back to my question really to the staff of how did you come up with 60 feet? If it, if it didn't come from Dominion, where did it come from?
Right. And, uh, and we're taking the data that they've provided us, uh, showing where their proposed structures are, uh, measuring the distance, making sure that we're crafting an ordinance that, that permits, uh, whoever the regional power provider is, uh, to modernize and upgrade their equipment and do it efficiently. Uh, so, we're looking at the data that they've got and taking a number that is sufficient, uh, and also that if it's exceeded, uh, would be a substantial change, and 60-foot fit the bill. Um, I think what I'm hearing, uh, is that the major concern here is not necessarily the longitudinal movement, but maybe the lateral movement. And if that's something that you all are interested in, in, in adding into this, that is something worth discussion. Probably want to get the public hearing closed and, and then, and then further discussion on that.
Because, because under that, if you have 100, you say it was 180 feet right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
And, and you have two lines within this 180-foot right-of-way, if you're moving 60 feet, is, is, is there anything for, any kind of restrictions on Dominion? If, if, if we had that 60-foot, um, latitude, is there anything elsewhere or any other kind of law standards preventing you from moving it right over to the edge of the right-of-way?
Um, N E S C guidelines will keep me from doing so. Um, I have to keep the complete structure and wires inside the right-of-way, even under what we call a six-pound wind, which is 60 miles an hour. So, the, the wires are going to blow significantly depending on span length. So, I make sure when that happens that the wire's inside, and also the vegetation concerns, our forestry department comes down on a cycle basis. It's, I think it's three to four years, and they have to clip the trees. So, you have to stay far enough away, so based on gross rate of a standard tree, it's a, it's approximately 20 feet for 115. So, that's as close as the, the conductor can be to the edge. And also, we have another transmission line, there's transmission line, transmission line clearance is, um, also involved in that. So, you can only get so close to the other transmission line as well.
Right, right.
So, at 60 feet, it's really not possible in this situation at all.
But that sounds like you're able, under those standards, to, to move a line pretty close to the edge of your right-of-way. I mean, if the wires aren't going over the line, then you can go there. Yeah. Well, that, that, that may be a great concern to a property owner. Any, any other questions?
I have, I have one thing that I should add. Uh, in, in the, the presentation, and this has come up a couple of times, I just want to clear it for the record, it's more of a typo than anything, uh, that, that's, the radius, the end station where this line goes to, it, it leaves Four River Substation in Hanover, and it goes, but it goes to Fredericksburg Substation, not Palatane Substation. And it's on Palatane Street, so it's naturally gets confusing to people, but it's Fredericksburg Substation. There is a Palatane Substation in Palatane County as well, which further complicates it.
So, this project ends at the Palatane Street Substation?
Yes, yes.
That's, okay.
Yeah. But, which is called Frederick, Palatane Street, which is on, uh, which is Fredericksburg Substation. See, I'm even confused, but, but I, you know, I, I just had to say that out loud, just for clarification.
Thank you. Are there any other persons wishing to speak to the, uh, to the, uh, text amendment? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this stage. Any discussion, uh, or anybody have a motion to make?
I mean, my statement would be, um, for the, people have brought up a concern of, uh, how close to the right-of-way? Do we want to add a certain distance to it that they can't go as, any closer than, you know, X amount of feet?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I, it, it's very confusing to me because I'm involved in this, I'm a property owner, but they have an easement. And as I understand it, and maybe this isn't the place to discuss it, but they've been pretty much put whatever they want on that easement within the S C C and everybody else's regulations. It's not really a property owner's decision, as I understand it. I could be wrong, but you'd have to read the easement, you know, to really clarify that. So, it's kind of a conflict, even if the owner doesn't want it there.
Well, that's where the city comes in. The city can have some requirements under its zoning ordinance.
And, and some questions have been raised tonight that I would like to get clarified personally, because I don't really understand a lot of the ramifications of these things. And so, I was thinking of making a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Um, well, just, just for your information, some of the other, uh, text amendments that are on the agenda tonight and that are for public hearing, uh, I was going to suggest that we postpone action on them and have a work session, uh, on March the 29th, because some of these are, are kind of complicated, particularly like the sign ordinance, that I, I would really like to spend some time delving into them. And so, it's possible that this, too, could be postponed to our, our, to that meeting or slash work session or both. Um, I don't know, Mr. Craig, do you know whether that poses problems for the Dominion?
Well, uh, this is an interesting case. Um, we are, uh, charged here with applying local regulatory standards to a piece of infrastructure that is a statewide facility. Um, it involves private property owners, uh, and it also involves a very clear public good. Uh, there are questions out there that I've heard tonight, uh, that I think can be worked on by the planning commission and fleshed out during this hearing in the next couple of minutes. Um, there are some broader questions that I don't know, uh, that can be answered, and it will be answered, uh, uh, over, over the next course of time. And, and some of the things about health effects, I know we've talked about that before. I mean, it's just not going to be something that I can put information together on. So, I would encourage you all, I think this has been a good dialogue so far. Uh, I think you've raised one clear issue about lateral movement, and I know that's one that we can solve. I'd encourage you all to take, to, to try to see if you can come to some resolution on that. But Tom, I don't want to sell you short. If you have other questions that I'm missing here, um, I, I do think the important point here is that, uh, we're trying to, um, find a way to apply, uh, local standards, uh, to a company that's operating at statewide level, uh, and that, uh, that's a big challenge. Um, and we are trying to draw a line so that any impacts that will significantly impact local property owners are beyond that line. And, and I, I'm, I'm confident that we can do that today. But that's, you know, again, if I'm missing some questions, I'll, I'd like to hear what they are.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a Dominion Power question? Uh, the concept was put out here that, that perhaps you could live within a limit of, of not more than a 20-foot lateral shift. Is that true? Can you live within that limit?
Yeah, well, it, in this situation would be, but if there's a future substation or something like that that's added, that could, it was a problem, because in, in here, what we, we call it, uh, I call it a tangent structure. The, the wire's just hanging and has free movement. So, let's say I take a 90-degree turn. I could set a structure closer and possibly, uh, feed a new substation of some sort or a new customer. Um, so, you know, lateral movement for this rebuild, 20 feet would be fine, but, you know, if you're going to write something for a future, uh, use and control, that could, that could be an issue.
Well, that, that's a hypothetical, but I, I don't know how we can anticipate any possible hypothetical. We don't, we're, we're only sort of dealing with the problem with us today.
As today, no, the 20 feet would be fine.
Let me ask another question. Did I understand you to say that you had to stay at least 20 feet off the edge of your easement because of the lateral movement of lines?
Yes, with the type of structures that I have today, yes, I, I have to. You can do different types of structures. Uh, I was trying not to muddy the water too much, but, um, you, there can be issues ti, times where you don't need, you don't need to stay 20 feet.
You, you don't need to stay 20 feet?
Yes.[1795.56] Yes, it depends on what type of.
Is that, is that a minimum? But it's a, it's a minimum?
Well, based on, okay, 115 KV is a 20-foot minimum from vegetation. So the structure could be 15 feet, and then you have, it's to the wire. So we also have arms and things like that can extend the structure away from, can extend the energized wire away from the structure, possibly.
So what is, okay. How far, what is your minimum distance to the edge of right-of-way?
To the energized conductor is 20 feet.
To any portion of your wires or your, or your structures?
I don't, I, that's, there's too many hypotheticals on that. I couldn't, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
What, what's your minimum on this project?
This project would be 20 feet.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the observations that we cannot anticipate every possible hypothetical. And, and I, I think we need to address the issue in the project that's before us. And either a standard of a shifting of not more than 20 feet lateral to the existing poles or a standard of not closer than within 20 feet of the edge of the easement is, is, would be my suggestion for you all to, to contemplate, to add as a, as a modification to, to the condition so that we can move forward with this. Because I, I don't want us to go round and round circles about hypotheticals and, and what-ifs. And unless there is some other issue, I, I agree with Mr. Craig. I think if we could apply that standard and move along, that would be what I would suggest.
Okay. Dr. Ratz?
No, no, I'm, I'm a little confused here about, when you say 20 feet, do you mean 20 feet from the wire?
Any, no portion, no portion of the facility could be closer than 20 feet?
So the pole or the H thing would have to be actually further away.
Right.
20 feet.
Correct.
Because the arm stretches out.
Correct.
So you're talking about from the edge of that arm.
Correct.
To the, okay.
And just an, an observation, I want to make sure I heard this correctly. That 20 feet, if, because the wires are not static, and they could potentially move, your energized conductors do not. So is that something, that's my understanding, the conductors themselves on the pole would not. So when you're talking about something being within 20 feet, can you explain?
That 20 feet would be in a static position. So like I said, 60 mile an hour wind would be a high wind event.
So you couldn't regulate how close the wire could be because the wire is not static? But the energized conductor, I guess in some way should be. I guess it may move.
The energized conductor must stay inside the right-of-way though, at all times.
Right.
So at a minimum, that's, that's going to be worse. But on a normal day, it will hang straight down, and it'd be at, at a minimum 20 feet.
And, and as far as I understand, your, your concern with future development is if you're running more wires. We're talking about replacing wires from 1950s, so, and Fredericksburg being a pretty, there's not a lot of developments going to happen in Fredericksburg. You know, we're not Stafford County or Loudoun County that have exploded in the last 20 years. So I'm, I feel comfortable with the amendment you propose, that it should stay in place for a long time.
Steve, I think that's a great point, if I just jump in for a second. Any new construction of a facility, any new transmission line would require some other process. This is only for the rebuild and modernization of existing facilities.
Okay. I'm, I'm sensing that there may be a consensus here on an amendment to the proposed ordinance. Is, is it your desire to, to try to craft that and adopt that this evening? Or is there a desire to table this until our next meeting?
I would like to ask a couple more questions, if I could, of the staff. For them to put the poles into these easements, would they have to get a permit and a construction permit and go through a TRC with, so that the erosion control fences were put in and the proper construction method used? Or is this too small of an area because of the pole itself doesn't dictate a site plan approval? How, how would that work, Mike?
Yeah, construction in the easement, they do work with Public Works on a special excavation permit, and Public Works has been involved in reviewing this project. Otherwise, there is no development plan that we put in place. They do work to minimize their footprints, and they have environmental studies that they've provided to us. So we would not have a major development plan on this.
So if they come in the backyard, they can, they have to put silt fence up, so they don't have to put silt fence up? Or how does that?
Oh, well, there you go.
Through whose permit? I'm sorry, can you speak to the microphone, please?
Just as a broad overview, we do comply. We file with the DEQ. We have a registration statement, and within Dominion, we have what's called linear exemption. That is to say that we have erosion sediment control plans as well as access plans that are within a mandated SWIP book, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. All of that is kept on-site at key locations. We post it prominently. Anybody is available to view that at the time. But to your point, we are held to the same standards as any other contractor that does construction and land disturbance activities. So it does include, as an engineer would design it, silt fence, construction entrance, other applicable structures as defined in the Virginia Erosion Sediment Control Handbook.
Okay, does the city get involved in that approval at all? Or is this my knowledge?
That, that's a state, that's a state regulation.
These are all states. So the city won't have any control over this. So the property owner has a problem, he's going to call the state.
Unless it's in the public right-of-way.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions, Tom?
Not that I can think of.
So am I, am I sensing that we want to, to move forward on this this evening and try to craft an amendment to the, to the ordinance? If so, Ms. Dooley, do you think that you could put your hand to that in a few minutes and try to craft something, a, a clause? What we're trying to do here is to add a sentence in the, next to the last sentence of paragraph F, the sentence that begins, "The location of the new structures may vary from the existing locations by up to 60 feet so long as the new structure is located within the existing easement." And I think what we're wanting to do is to have an amendment that would say, "So long as such movement of a, of an existing facility does not come more than 20 feet from the edge of the right-of-way."
Can I make this suggestion? What we're trying to do is to restate an existing regulation. What Dominion Power is saying is that they have existing regulations that prohibit them from getting closer than 20 feet to the edge of the easement. And I think it's under probably the National Electr, the National Electric Safety Code. And rather than try to restate the requirements of the NESC in our zoning ordinance, I might, would add a sentence that would say, you know, "The project must comply with all other applicable laws and regulations." And that way, we, I don't want to try to restate the NESC in the zoning code, restate it incorrectly, and then have two inconsistent regulations applying to the same project.
But that code could change next week.
That's true, that's true, Mr. Pates, but I, I would hate for us to put us in the role of having a better understanding on these issues than, than the electrical engineers who would be working on those codes.
We put 60 feet in there.
Well, I, I hesitate for us to be arbitrary and capricious, Mr. Pates.
Okay. Dr. Ratz?
Well, I was just going to say, would adding the word longitudinally work with the 60 feet, up to 60 feet longitudinally? That means they can do it back and forth, fine. We're not, that's not really a big problem. It's the side-to-side that we're concerned about. But the side-to-side is supposedly taken care of by the national regulations.
Well, I think Ms. Dooley's suggesting that we add that reference to, to any other regulations to deal with the latitudinal issue.
Yeah, so leave, yeah, and then just put in longitudinally with the 60 to make, make it clear what it is.
So, so we would say the 60 feet would apply longitudinally, and we would add an additional statement saying all other regulations have to be complied with?
What we might do tonight is you might identify your primary concerns rather than really trying to wordsmith the exact amendment. If you can identify the substance of your concerns, and then we can pass that recommendation along to city council. And we can study them in between. And I don't, I don't know exactly how it will turn out. I, I do, I understand your concerns about the lateral movements. And I guess Mr. Craig mentioned at the beginning, we're trying to accommodate the project. They have a, an obligation under state law to provide power. It's a 60-year-old, and it only applies to existing lines. We're trying to accommodate the project so long as there's not a significant impact on the public interest from the zoning point of view. And so long, so we're just trying to say, if, if you're replacing existing lines within basically the same corridor, in essentially the same locations, in essentially the same heights, then that's really not a zoning issue that the city of Fredericksburg is going to get into. Even if we did get into it, you know, from a zoning perspective, we would still be passing people through to DEQ or the NESC or the SCC or the appropriate regulatory authority. There, all those state authorities are still going to be in place. We wouldn't, wouldn't be shouldering them out in terms of who's actually overseeing the project. That's how it is with a transmission line. So that would be my suggestion. What I'm hearing from the commission is that you have voiced concerns about public notice of the proposed project. And is there a way to work in a concept of public notice into the, the rebuild project, into the non-conforming status? And number two, is there a way to address the lateral movement or the, the overall limitations on the project? And all I can say is we could look into that and advance those recommendations to city council and do everything that we can to address those concerns.
And that, that may include amendment to the ordinance that's before us.
Right, right. Those would be reflected in that.
Leave that up to you all and the council. Okay, do I hear a motion? Why not? Why not?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance non-conformities to permit the rebuilding of existing electrical power transmission lines as proposed, but with a request to staff and council to look into and hopefully address our two primary concerns, which are the notice provisions of this action. And to craft some language that would put a restriction on the proximity of overhead facilities to the limit of the easement, to the boundary of the easement.
I second that.
And, and, and the third, actually, there was a third thing, and that is the longitudinal movement. A clarification, that's really just a clarification of what's there.
That would just be a clarification.
Right, okay.
Oh, ours, yeah, longitudinal, never mind.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, is there any, any discussion?
So just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I'm supposed to then restate the motion, but maybe I, I'm not sure I can do that.
So I'm, I'm kind of still not sure where we ended up at because as I, with the exception of what my esteemed colleague Tom O'Toole had to say, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what actually are we trying to get after here? Because as is written to me, and as the city attorney said, had a statement in there about all applicable, you know, regulations and laws, it would make sense that this could go forward. So I'm, I'm still trying to figure out why are we trying to put such specificity in here?
Well, I, I think the, the reason is, is that we want to move the ordinance forward this evening and move it on to city council. And the idea is that we could, could do that while at the same time expressing our concern about these three items and ask that the staff transmit those concerns to the council. And the staff can work on it to see whether there are some proposed amendments that could be made to the ordinance, but that we would be supporting the ordinance as written. Is that, is it, am I correct, Mr. Orner?
So the last sentence, the last part, you know, we're recommending approval of the ordinance along with council's consideration of those items that we brought up in the interest of seeing this move forward as an important, needed public facility.
Mr. Scann, does that help you at all?
I just still have an issue with how we've questioned what the staff presented. So if Dominion would have said 60 is indeed what we need and it works, would we all be fine? That's all. I just wanted to put that on the table. Because, just because he said 20, we all are saying, we're going 20. Okay, so. But if he would have said 60 works, we have said, hey, we're good.
So we have a motion and second. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion is, passes 5-1. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, we're making real headway here. Okay. Now, let's see, move on to, let's see. This is agenda item number eight, isn't it? Yes. Number eight, okay. This is UDOTA 201701. The city of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the City Code, Chapter 72, Unified Development Ordinance, to change sign regulations. The proposed regulations remove content-based provisions in accordance with the US Supreme Court ruling in the case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. The current sign regulations are to be repealed and replaced with the regulations that prescribe the area, height, number, and construction type of permitted signs, establish illumination standards, identify prohibited signs, exempt certain signs from issuance of a zoning permit, define criteria for the display of temporary signs, create new definitions, consolidate sign regulations into Section 72-59, consolidate sign measurement calculations into Section 72-82, update non-conforming sign regulations in accordance with the Code of Virginia. Mr. Sherman?
Thank you, Chairman Pates. Just hearing you read that list makes me realize how much work went into this and, and how many things it does cover. And so I'll give you a little background. I'll go through the highlighted items that, that I think are significant and substantial. We'll run through those. And then if you want to go back through any individual aspect in the PowerPoint presentation, we can do that, or we could take it up at a later date. So how did we get here? Let me just give you some background on this. The Supreme Court made a decision in 2015 which basically deemed all local sign regulations unconstitutional. So following that decision, there was a flurry of activity, lots of webinars, people having no idea how to interpret the Supreme Court decision. Even on webinars that I participated in, there were legal folks who were the presenters who would argue with each other and try to decide what they were going to do and how to interpret the, the new law. So it took countless of hours to get us to this point. Mr. Ekstrom, Mr. Johnston and I, with some supporting staff, spent a lot of time looking at it. At first, we decided we would go the route of adopting a model ordinance that is basically created by people in national lawyering groups. We tried to do that. We realized it wasn't a good fit here in the city. And so we decided a better approach would be to take our existing ordinance and try to truly make the changes that were dictated by the Supreme Court while making updates that we felt were necessary. And in doing so, we, we did get feedback from a number of outside interests, and we did try to make those changes as well. So to start with the PowerPoint presentation, I, I chose this slide because it really shows the diversity of signage that used to be in 1955. This was from the Dog Mart. Mr. Withers correctly identified that. I don't know if you guys picked up on that.
Not many of us remember that.
One sign that still exists today that's not in this photo, but I think is kind of outside what people would normally expect, expect in a historic downtown, is the Bulwark sign. It's lit up, it's neon, it's super cool. And, and to do away with stuff like that, you know, may or may not be appropriate. But we had a lot of diversity. We will continue to have a lot of diversity in our signs, both in the downtown and throughout the city. So what happened in 2015? The Supreme Court ruled in the case of Reed. The Supreme Court ruled in the case of Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, that signs could not be regulated based on their content. One of the keys to understanding the Supreme Court decision is to note that if you must read the sign in order to apply the sign code, your code is unconstitutional. In other words, content-based distinctions are no longer allowed. We can regulate a number of things as listed here on this slide, but we can't regulate it based on what it says. Our current code identifies certain signs, such as open and closed signs, menu daily special signs, political signs, real estate signs, informational signs, order board signs, even what could be advertised on temporary signs. And all that gets thrown out. So what we tried to do was to move signs that were covered based on their content and to the best we could designate certain square footages, certain zoning districts where they would continue to be exempt. Here are some examples of those. And these would apply in all zoning districts unless there is a specific prohibition listed within that zoning district or overlay district, including the historic district. So B says that up to four square feet of building signage within six feet of any building entrance would be exempt, as long as the sign is not illuminated if it's in a residential or planned development residential district. So this would generally cover like your open signs and other kinds of signage that people, menu board signs, a lot of those signs that I previously listed based on their content. Letter F addresses temporary signs, and these would be probably what you would consider more likely to be real estate signs, but they could say whatever they want. But I think this would focus on trying to transfer those real estate signs in particular over to our current, our proposed code. So what it says is if you have a property with an active building permit, you can still have one sign up to six square feet and up to six feet in height if freestanding in any residential and PDR district, or 32 square feet and eight feet in height in any other district. That's generally what our code says now. We also have language in there for properties with sale or rent. And the third bullet addresses what people probably would expect to be the political signs. But again, during this timeframe noted, I could put any sign up. It doesn't have to say I want any particular candidate to win. It can say I love dogs. You know, it could say whatever it wants, as long as it's within these guidelines. There was a change made to the timeframe listed here when we presented this to council. Initially, it said that signs would be permitted beginning 60 days before the election and ending 30 days after that election. Council did ask staff to change it to 10 days after the election, as is shown here. We also have letters, a letter G, which allows an additional permanent ground or wall-mounted sign of up to two square feet in size within a parking lot that does not advertise a product or service. Again, it can say whatever it wants, but this would address things like handicap signs or ADA parking signs. K is that signs that are illegible, this is a new one, that signs are illegible because of their physical attributes, they do not allow for the differentiation of words, letters, figures, designs, symbols, or logos from the observer with 2020 vision located in a public right-of-way or public property or across a property line. So basically, if it's in your backyard and no one can see it, then you can have the The next slide. This came up today. This was a recommendation from the city attorney's office. We did add language in the current draft, limiting the size of flags. That's not in our current code. After further review, we do propose, and I'll make a motion, I'll make a recommendation with my, at the end of my staff report, that you delete in your recommendation, you delete the size limitation, and it would be more consistent with our current UDO allowance and allow people to have flags that don't advertise a product or service of any size on their property. This was another one that we carried over. However, our current code is a little squirrely on this. Our current code does not count signs that are inside a building toward the allowed building signage. It doesn't specifically exempt it from permitting, but that's how it's always been treated. And cleaning this up and moving over to the exempt signs will correct any confusion that there is in the code. So what it would say is that you can have these two signs that are shown on these slides as long as they're not in motion by any means. They don't change the degrees of intensity, they don't flash or have intermittent lights. As long as they're just on or off, you can have them. So basically, you can't do this. You can't have an open sign that slowly changes its lettering or any sign that does that. You can't have signs that turn off and on, parts are not. There's one exception now in the current draft. When I was presenting this slide at the council work session, there became some concern that, oh geez, we can, this would happen in the downtown. People might cover all their windows up with these illuminated signs on the inside of the building, and we would have no say. That is what the current code, how it's interpreted today. But we do recognize that council had concerns, and so we did recommend a change. I want to pause on this slide for a second. I did some inventory today of all the downtown signs that are illuminated inside buildings. It was really cold, and I did treat myself to a coffee afterwards. But I was surprised at the number I found, and I won't ask you guys to answer out loud, but if you could take a second to think about, hey, how many of these signs have I ever really thought about? Because that was something that council came up. How many of these signs do really exist in the downtown? And what I found, well, first I'll go over the suggested change. To address the concern of, oh, my gosh, this could be everywhere, staff recommended a change that says in the historic district illuminated signs, it should say within the inside of a building, and that may be another technical change we make, within one foot of the window are prohibited. And what that does is basically, it still allows the sign, but in essence, it prohibits it because a lot of businesses would choose not to put it up at all if it has to be basically inside their space. So this gets to the point of addressing council's concern that we don't want these signs everywhere. Staff's concern, however, is that it would create, while creating the desired effect, it would create an enforcement concern. There are 40, I counted 42 of these signs within a 10-block segment of downtown, primarily on Caroline Street and William Street, at 26 different businesses. So it would create a nonconformity for all of those businesses and all of their signs, as well as ones that I did not count. It also could create an enforcement issue where no one has ever, with the exception of the most recent Italian station, no one has ever come to me before putting one of these up and said, hey, do I need a permit for this? And so what would happen is business owners would continue to do that, and I would have to chase them and say, hey, guess what? You didn't, you violated our rules. You now have to come in and get a permit or face consequences. We also, I also have some concerns about that 12-inch measurement, being able to measure that effectively from the outside of the building. But if this is the, if this is the direction that you all and council are headed, we will certainly figure out a way to enforce this regulation. So with the prohibited signs, this is another one that staff made a change to. Right now, our law currently prohibits the outlining of buildings or any ornamental feature thereof. The cookout and the building on the lower right, they are not in the city, but this is an example of what lighting could be if that law was removed. The Hyatt on the left is in Eagle Village. I would interpret this as not being in violation of this law, but some others may. They may say, well, this is uplighting that is clearly identifying certain architectural features, and so there's some gray area there. Staff's proposal is to remove that. I do recognize, after talking to some people, that maybe a general removal of that regulation is not appropriate. Maybe we do care if it's in the historic downtown, but maybe we don't care if it's in the more intense commercial areas or in Central Park area. Maybe we do care if it's on the outside of the building, like in the lower right-hand corner, but maybe we don't care if it's on the inside of windows, generally outlining something, as you see here. Both of the other pictures are in the downtown. The next slide is, we did get into variable message board signs. Our current regulation says that if you have a variable message board sign, that message has to stay on that screen for a minimum of eight seconds. The previous zoning ordinance that was in effect prior to 2013 said it was five seconds. Stafford County's regulations tie it to five seconds. Spotsylvania County ties it to four seconds. VDOT ties it to four seconds as well. I've been tasked on a number of occasions to sit and time these signs, and I truly believe, realizing how long five seconds is, that five seconds is the appropriate measurement. It would bring all new signs in conformance with the old signs that were permitted prior to the 2013 change, and it would allow someone at a stoplight who was safely stopped to read a message, more than one message, without causing a traffic hazard. Five seconds, if you're going 30, 40 miles an hour, five seconds is not long enough for you to catch more than one message. The next one, the next issue came up after city council initiated the ordinance that, for the most part, is brought to you today. A council member heard from a constituent that there was a desire to put, to allow for these sale or feather flag signs on commercial properties in the city. Right now, our ordinance is very clear that those are prohibited in consideration of what we presented to the larger council body. And with respect to our current code, staff did maintain that prohibition in this draft, but you have been specifically asked to provide a recommendation on this issue, whether or not you think it's appropriate and whether or not it's appropriate in specifically the commercial districts, maybe excluding the downtown. I will point out to you, as you drive down Route 1 or Lafayette Boulevard, to take a moment and really see the clear demarcation between the city of Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania. Around the car dealerships, you will not see any of these. You will not see any bandit signs, for the most part. Same with Lafayette Boulevard, but as soon as you cross that jurisdictional line, you will see them. And so the task before you is to consider which one do you like? Which one do you think is appropriate? And the same applies to city council. The next one is landscaping. Our current code does require applicants to submit with their sign permit application a landscaping plan for the base of freestanding signs. It's not very specific. There's no real criteria. It basically says you have to provide a plan that shows the ground cover or landscaping you propose. Doesn't say how much or how tall or how many or whatever. And it does sometimes lead to confusion because the sign company isn't into landscaping, so they have to, they have to sort that out. Also, sometimes there is a maintenance issue that comes into play where someone has not maintained their landscaping. It dies, it becomes gross, and then there is an enforcement action that takes place. Staff has recommended the removal of that requirement. If the direction is to keep this requirement, staff will develop stronger language so that it's very clear what the expectation is. Next, we move on to design standards. We created uniform standards that would apply to all zoning districts. Three are highlighted here. One is that we would limit the size of electronic variable message board signs to 40% of the total permitted sign area. Currently, that rule is only in place for the commercial and industrial districts on freestanding signs, excuse me, on building-mounted signs. This would apply to both buildings-mounted signs and freestanding signs in all zoning districts. We propose to reduce the setbacks for freestanding signs. Currently, the rule is however tall your sign is, it needs to be equal to that height, setback from all property lines, and double that height to any other existing freestanding sign. We're proposing to cut those distances by half. One thing I didn't put on the slide, but I will note, is currently in the, in the planned development commercial district in Central Park, there is no setback requirement, meaning freestanding signs can be on right up to the property line. This new regulation would apply now, if approved, to that, to Central Park as well, meaning that if you have a 10-foot-tall sign, it will now have to sit back five feet from the property line. And the last bullet is, our current code says that all businesses are supposed to turn off their illuminated signs before and after hours. This one is a difficult one to enforce. We kind of got to the root of why it existed, and it should exist, to protect our residential uses. And so the proposal would be to amend that requirement when the business is adjacent to residential and planned development districts. Currently, we do not have any standard for building-mounted signs and residential, for non-residential uses in residential and planned development residential districts. That's Idlewild. It's kind of a hole in our ordinance because our current ordinance does talk about freestanding signs in these districts, but just not building-mounted signs. This would apply to any of the commercial areas within Idlewild, businesses like the Friends of the Rappahannock or religious uses, which are typically in residential zones like St. Mary's Church. Technically, now, we're not allowed to have any building signs. This creates a standard. It's about a third of what you'd be allowed in standard commercial districts. Next, we updated the sign allowance for the same districts for freestanding signs. Currently, the allowance is for that 20 square feet and five feet in height. We maintain that requirement for the larger streets, streets that are greater than 70 feet in width, things that may be on Route 1 or maybe even William Street where there's some, there's some higher traffic. But if you have a commercial business on a lower-intensity street, we decided that it was appropriate to reduce the square footage of freestanding signs. This does not allow for signage for accessory uses like home businesses. Both the freestanding signage allowance and the building-mounted signage would not apply. These would only be in place for primary or principal uses in those zoning districts. Next is in the commercial and industrial zoning districts. These are two recent changes. One is currently in our code, there's a limitation on 200 square feet in the commercial districts, regardless of how big your building is. We thought that that was more suitable to be limiting the 200-square-footed, 200-square feet per building side, very similar to what we allow in the Central Park area. The overall allowance for signage would still be dictated based on your specific building frontage. So it's 1.5 square feet per one linear foot of your building front. Let's say somehow you have a giant building and you're allowed 300 square feet. What it would say is that on any one side, you couldn't have more than 200 square feet, and if you chose to go up to that limit, you could distribute the other 100 square feet on the other three sides. The next one, and this one is one we took from a feedback we received from the Fall Hill Professional Park. It's a group of doctors on Fall Hill Avenue who said, hey, you know, we really need visibility on Fall Hill Avenue. We need to have a freestanding sign at that entrance. We used to have one. It was removed during the construction. We need some visibility. Help us out. And conveniently, we were going through this process, and we recognized that that was a valid point. We needed that, too. It wouldn't just apply to office parks, but it would also apply to commercial centers like Cowan Crossing Commercial. And so we have included allowances based on the specific zoning districts to allow for additional signage where you meet the office park definition or retail center definition, which is also newly created. You could have one additional, and in some cases taller, sign than what you would have been allowed individually on each parcel. Specifically, in the CT zoning district, you remember that the CT zoning district is a lower-intensity commercial district. It also allows for residential uses. The CT district currently only allows for one five-foot-tall sign and up to 40 square feet maximum, depending on how wide your road is. This proposal would allow for one additional sign for office parks and retail centers that could go up to 10 feet in height. So we're doubling that height and allowing for the additional signage. That sign could go up to as great as 60 square feet, depending on your road frontage. So we do recognize that need. We felt that that, in particular, was appropriate for the CT zoning district to give the visibility but still protect the potential for residential uses nearby. The next, and I'm almost done. In the planned development districts, we did remove and consolidate the sign regulations into Article 5. We also removed the restriction for building signs in the PD zoning district to be limited to only three sides of a building. For some reason, that's in there for PDC. We don't have that regulation in any other zoning district, and so we thought it appropriate to be consistent across the board. Again, the maximums signage is still dictated by, in this case, the perimeter of the building, but you could put it on any of the four sides. Temporary signs, we did consolidate the regulations right now. They're broken into two pieces in our ordinance. We're consolidating them into one section. In the gateway corridor overlay districts, we wanted to implement certain aspects of the design standard, standards adopted in the Princess Anne Street and Lafayette Boulevard corridor design guidelines by prohibiting the use of electronic variable message board signs. That's explicitly written in the design guidelines. We wanted to put that in the code. I will mention that there are also guidelines to address the prohibition of freestanding signs along certain parts of Princess Anne Street and Lafayette Boulevard, but we intend to address that with our small area plans, potentially making changes to our code at that time or to the design guidelines at that time. In the definitions section, we did revise the definition of a structure to include flagpoles, and we created definitions for the office park, retail flagpoles, and we created definitions for the office park, retail center, as well as public art and roof signs. We also created sign measurements, we consolidated them all into one section, and we created, we set maximum height allowances for building-mounted signs. Basically, it's dictated by the building height, as also described by the code, with one exception that would allow for signs to go on top of parapet walls. After speaking in particular with our historic resources planner, there are a number of buildings in the historic downtown that have parapets, that if you were standing on the street, you wouldn't know that that wasn't part of the regular part of the building, and, and it would be appropriate to put that sign there. We also looked at a number of other commercial sites and thought that that would be appropriate. And then, lastly, we addressed the non-conforming sign section, to, to make it conform with the enabling legislation. There were three parts that were not in line with state code, and so, we are, we are proposing the repeal of those sections. I do feel very confident in the draft that we have before you, there are, there are a few changes I noted. I can recommend approval of the ordinance with the one change in particular, to the exempt signs regarding the flag size. However, I do recognize how much public input I've already received in the last two days, and that there may be some additional tweaks that you all want to consider, after, particularly after hearing from the public, and, and we are well-positioned to work with you to make any adjustments that you see.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. You've done your usual thorough job on this, it reminds me of your fence ordinance, which was, was also very good. I, I would ask the commission if we might vary our agenda or program tonight, given the late hour. What I would like to suggest is that we go forward on this item, Items Eight, Nine, and Ten for public hearing, that we open those for public hearing, receive public comment, but defer discussion on all three of those items until our next meeting on the twenty-ninth, and also to schedule a work session prior to that meeting, to devote perhaps an hour or so to at least one of these ordinances. I mean, I think that the sign ordinance alone could occupy us a full evening, and I think it deserves it, it's very important. So, is there any objection to that this evening, of just completing our public hearings, but deferring action until the next meeting?
I, I agree with, with that, I think we ought to take the public comments tonight on these, and then hold off further discussion. We're going to be here till 2:00 AM.
And, but I, I don't want people who've, who've come to comment to, to have to come back or anything, and want to get them home as well. So, with, with no objection, then, then, on this item, we, we would simply defer our questions to the staff and everybody until our next meeting. But I would open up this item for public comment. If there's anybody wishing to speak to the sign ordinance, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and zip code. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ann Little, I live at 726 Williams Street. I wanted to speak to a couple of things. The variable sign ordinance is prohibited on the Lafayette Corridor in the downtown area. I think this is a very good thing. Unfortunately, that leaves a lot of our city open to these unattractive signs. Variable signs change the atmosphere of our streets. Tourists come to see our historic city, not Las Vegas. I can't imagine seeing those signs on Cullen Boulevard, College Avenue, Princess Anne Street, or Kenmore Avenue, and so many other arteries of our city. Frankly, I think they're unsightly, and really don't have any place in our historic city, both downtown or in the surrounding neighborhoods. Even Route Three is getting really cluttered with these variable signs. This is the first expression, first impression that visitors see of our city. It's getting pretty ugly, and getting even uglier, actually, because of all these signs. You know, I'll never forget my first impression when I went to Chiquitique, and you drive across that bridge, and all those ugly signs, and from that very moment, I thought of Chiquitique as just tacky, and I never lost that feeling, even though it had some beautiful places to it. And so, when we drive on Route Three, why do we want an ugly gateway? We all talk about cleaning up this gateway, and yet, we're letting these variable signs just take over. I also like to see the outlining of buildings with lights be severely limited. I live up really, very close to that corner of Washington and William, where there's going to be two large developments over the next couple of years. I think there's going to be an asset for our, our city, but at the same time, Williams Street is not the downtown, but yet, it's the gateway to the downtown, and if we start putting up a lot of lights, and a lot of really flashy things there, I think it's going to detract. I will say that I don't think Sedona is the best signage for that corridor, because it doesn't speak to you're coming into historic downtown. So, this corridor passes the University, the Confederate Cemetery, and all these beautiful houses, and then, we're going to get to a very commercial area. I'm hoping that commercial area stays with the flavor of the downtown. I also think those sail feather signs should be limited or not allowed. On a really good windy day, I've picked up dozens of these, all over the streets. They're just all over, they're just blow, but more importantly, they're not attractive. Every time one retailer adds lights, moves them flashing colors, that ups the ante for the guy next door to do the same. This brings way more sign pollution. Retailers think the bigger and flashier their signs are, it's going to bring customers, but not so much. You know, really, good food and good product bring customers. If you go into Hilton Head Island, all the signs are the same, and those people haven't all gone out of business, they all compete at the same level, and the, the reality is, most of us are walking around with little micro GPSs on us at all time. We can find places that we need to find, but if we're going to just start putting flashing signs out as visual clutter, without the consideration of what that's doing to us as a whole. I urge you to ban the variable signs, outlining the building with lights and sail feather signs, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Low.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning committee, Hamilton Palmer, 1500 Caroline Street. I've been up since early this morning, and, and will, again, get up early tomorrow morning, and I'm sure all of y'all have. I respectfully request that you hold the public hearing open, at least take comments in, so that, and I won't take up any more of your time on this item, or the next one, if you'll, you know, allow us to submit some written comments for your deliberations. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Ron Whiting, from Fredericksburg Orthopedics, at 3310 Fall Hill Avenue, City of Fredericksburg, 22401. I think you all have a little packet handout that I made up, a little hastily, but early in the year is, you know, we're the only business, other than the plastic surgeons, from 7-Eleven down to the lower apartments, going down to the roundabout. We've been that way for the last twenty years. If, our issue is with this ordinance, the sign ordinance, is the ten-foot restriction, is, it doesn't take into consideration terrain, nor does it take in slope or visibility. So, what I try to propose to do here is to give the commission a little bit of background, or is, and maybe you've all driven down Fall Hill, I'm sure, at some point in time, but reading from left to right, and then down, is going from the eastward direction from Central Park, this is looking, the first picture is looking out from where the sidewalk, where the proposed sign would be, is looking up to the hill, starting at, at the apartments. Coming down that hill, you'll see a little red arrow light there. That, right now, is a non-conforming sign. It's a four-foot piece of plywood that stands, that's on a two-foot stanchion, that the city paid for, as a temporary sign. You cannot read it. As you keep going, and you keep going down towards the facility, we call this the nub, because that's what we tell our patients, is that we have new patients, they can't find us, they can't find the plastic surgeons. So, as you move down, you still can't see the nub, and you're almost, you're a hundred feet, fifty feet away. Finally, when you get in, within eighty-five, eighty feet, you see this little nub there. That's a non-conforming sign. You can see it in the next picture, is that it's just sitting there. Thankfully, the city hasn't taken away from us, because it's the only thing that identifies that there's two businesses behind the trees. What you're looking at here is the slope. When they came back and they did the, the Fall Hill widening, they took, they took off almost twenty feet, and then they sloped it down, because they lowered the road, I think it was a foot. Go to page three, this is coming up going west. This is starting at the bridge. You can't see anything, there's nothing there, because you have trees in the way. As you start moving up that, that road, you can see that we are currently right there, that little speck. As you move further, you can finally see a little bit of that sign. Can't read it, but there's a nub there. So, and I don't mean to be facetious about this, but that's exactly what this is. So, as you finally move forward, moving to the next page, as it moves you through, and finally, you're at the entrance of Fall Hill. Can you read that? I don't think you can. So, we're proposing, well, first of all, this is our old sign, that was sixteen feet Our new signs, on the next pages, we have two proposed, we haven't picked which one they are yet, but each of them are about sixteen feet high. One is from Dowling, one is from Sign Enterprises. Dowling showed us a picture that kind of gives you a perspective of how that looks on that slope. The problem is, as you move down that slope, the higher the thing, the, the hedge has to go, so you can see it. Now, we think we're pretty good neighbors to the city, and the city's been good to us. One thing you don't know is, even though it's, it's Zone CT, CT, there's a master deed on that property. The only thing that can be built on those, on those lots is a medical practice facility, a rehabilitation therapy, a pharmacy, or a medical independent lab, such as Labport. Even though CT allows for single-family housing, they can't build on that property. And I don't know anybody who would want to build a single-family home next to an orthopedic firm, plastic surgeons. Am I over? I'm sorry.
Just please wrap it up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is John Gerlock, I live at 809 Charlotte Street, Fredericksburg, 22401. I'm speaking tonight in my capacity as a resident, and not as a member of the ARB. I'm concerned about the definition of public art that is contained in this draft ordinance, and I don't know if you can bring it up in front of you, but I'll read it. Public art, items expressing creative skill or imagination in a visual form, such as painting or sculpture, which are intended to beautify or provide aesthetic influences to public areas, or areas which are visible from the public realm. Essentially, as I understand, items that meet this definition would be exempted from the sign ordinance, in terms of the maximum allowed size of a building-mounted sign per each elevation, for instance, in the historic district. Unfortunately, I think this definition is really broad. It easily exempts commercial advertising from the sign regulations. Just slap a pretty image on a sign, call it public art, and you can upsize it far beyond what is allowed today by the code. I have basic, my basic comment in this regard is spend some more time developing the definition of public art, and in that, in that regard, I would suggest that a recommendation be made to council, to let a public body make a case-by-case determination of when something is or isn't public art. Perhaps that could be the Fredericksburg Art Commission, that seems to be contemplated in their, in their mission statement. Basically, I think it'd be wise to have a public body make this determination, rather than someone like the planning commission or the ARB, which seems to be a little bit too tied to the ordinance. I think it would also be wise to consider eliminating the definition to signage with respect to museums, educational institutions, nonprofit organizations, community art galleries, city-owned buildings, public property, and the like. Perhaps you might want to treat artwork on, on those types of properties a little differently than you would, say, a commercial business putting artwork in, in their, in their signage. And finally, you might want to consider recommending to council that the definition be limited to publicly-funded works of art. Some municipalities are doing that today. I haven't had the opportunity to dig into Reed v. Town of Gilbert, the Supreme Court decision, to get a sense for how much we can talk about what public art is, without getting into a content-based dilemma. And if we do that, then we have to narrowly tailor the ordinance to serve a compelling state interest, and that involves strict scrutiny, and all that goes with that. So, I just urge to proceed with your, your working group, spend a little more time on this definition, so that we don't end up with signage going crazy in the historic district. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No. Not exactly.
I'm Rupert Farley, 1305 Caroline Street. I've made a lot of comments at public meetings over the years, don't really enjoy it that much, but sometimes it's necessary, but I have this habit of not preparing my remarks, and basing my remarks on what I've heard before me. And I count on hearing your remarks first. So, usually, when an item is on the table, I get to hear the board, the commission, give their remarks, get the public to give their remarks, then I can see what's missing. Tonight, that got messed up, so I'd like to respectfully ask that my remarks be saved for your next meeting.
I was just, thank you, I was just speaking with Mr. Craig, that if there's no objection, I don't believe there is any problem with holding all three of these public hearings open until our next meeting. It may not be re-advertized, is that correct?
If you specifically say that the public hearings continue to the, our March twenty, your March 29th date, then we don't have to re-advertize.
Okay, so, we can, we'd say that, and welcome back. Yeah. Anyone else like to speak to this?
Mr. Farley did submit the, the comments on the blue piece of paper that was distributed on your table.
Okay, okay, good. Anyone else? Then, at this point, we'll, we'll end the public hearing for tonight, but we will hold this item open until our next meeting on March the 29th, and continue the public hearing at that time. At this stage, we'd like to go on to our next public hearing item, which I believe is number, item number nine, which is UDOTA 2017-02. The City of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the City Code, Chapter 72, United Development Ordinance, Unified Development Ordinance, Articles One and Two. The Article One amendments remove utility improvements in the public rights of way from the zoning regulations, and consolidate review authority in public works and the city council. The Article Two amendments clarify the authority of the zoning administrator and development administrator, conform application review processes to the Code of Virginia, and make technical changes throughout, including to appeal periods, public notice requirements, and the development review structure. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you. Since the majority of the public has left, maybe I will trim down what I was going to say. We joked earlier that I was supposed to just say that this was a bunch of lawyer speak, and end my presentation, but I'll go through a couple highlighted sections to give you some idea, and obviously, we'll continue to talk about this over the next couple of weeks. The Unified Development Ordinance was, was created in October 2013. It combined a lot of our subdivision, our It combined a lot of our subdivision, or all of our subdivision and zoning regulations at the time, which was a very good thing. We've been using the UDO now for about three and a half years, and we realize that there, it's time to update it, both to be in line with the state code authority that we have been given, as well as to make a few tweaks and to provide some clarity, in particular with public notice, appeal periods, and trying to make some evenness between all the application types. And so, particularly with Article 1, there's that one provision that we're proposing an amendment to, which would clearly state that anything that's in the public right-of-way would be not regulated through zoning regulations, but would be regulated through other appropriate means, likely through our public works department or our city manager's office. Article 2, there were, there are three main themes. One in particular, we wanted to clarify the duties and authority of the zoning administrator and the development administrator. Procedurally, there would be no change. The zoning administrator would continue to focus on land use activities and enforcement, while the development administrator, who is now deputized as the deputy zoning administrator, that role would continue to maintain primary oversight of subdivision and site plan review while still reviewing certain zoning permits. And lastly, the third theme would be to update the ordinance to reflect changes in the Code of Virginia or make slight revisions to conform with the code. Several examples that are stated in the staff report. One has to do with the definition of variance, updating it to current code definitions. Another is to address the approval process for conditional zoning map revisions, specifically proffers, updates to proffers. The next is to delete the current 12-month deadline for city council action on a zoning application. The next is to address special use permit applications and examining the impact of proposed special use permits on adjacent properties. The Supreme Court decisions permit the council to consider the impact on neighboring properties or the public, which is a broader field. We also propose a change to encompass the comprehensive plan review and to make it very clear when things are already deemed to be considered by the comprehensive plan. There are a few other points that I'll make, specific to public notice and appeals. The proposed changes do clarify where signs must be posted on a property. It clarifies that the city's notices can be sent via first-class mail. Applicants' notices would still be sent registered mail. It extends the ARB's review time to act on applications from 60 days to 90 days. It extends the appeal period for ARB decisions and corridor design reviews from 14 days to 30 days. It clarifies that only the applicant can appeal decisions related to subdivision and site plan exceptions, and that these decisions will be rendered in conjunction with site plan and subdivision plat, subdivision applications instead of separately. So those are some main highlights. The ordinance does take you through all the specific changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Staff does recommend, well, staff is on board with maintaining the public hearing open until your next meeting and consideration at your next meeting.
Okay. I don't know whether anybody has any questions for her at this stage. If not, then I would open the public hearing to anyone who's interested in speaking to this text amendment, seeing no one available unless one of you all want to go out there and speak. Then we'll conclude the public hearing this evening for this item, but hold it open until our next regular meeting on March the 29th. Moving on then to item number 10 on the agenda, public hearing, UDOTA 2017-04. The City of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the 2015 Comprehensive Plan to designate land use areas 1 through 8 and 10 as areas that are appropriate for revitalization, are served by mass transit, include mixed-use development, and permit a density of 3.0 floor area ratio in a portion thereof, and to establish policies requiring adequate public facilities and services, and to the Unified Development Ordinance of the City Code to permit non-residential development with a 3.0 floor area ratio as a special use in the commercial shopping center, commercial highway, planned development, commercial and planned development, medical centers, zoning districts. The effect of these amendments will be to exempt land within the designated land use areas from proffer reform legislation adopted by the 2016 Virginia General Assembly. The proffer reform legislation restricts local authority with respect to proffers or proffer amendments for a new residential development or a new residential use. Mr. Johnson?
I think, Mr. Chairman, that that description very adequately summarizes the item before you. This is the same text that was before you in January. There's no change. I guess I'll answer any questions you might have. Obviously, the public's gone for this evening, and we can discuss this next week. And we have Ms. Jett here for the next time on the agenda, perhaps after you've disposed of this item. Let's talk about where we're going to go at that meeting and decide how long we want to prolong this and Ms. Jett's presence here tonight. But unless anyone has any questions, why don't you move ahead?
Okay. This public hearing item, like our earlier one, is two different resolutions, two different votes, is that correct? One's on the cop plan and one's on the UDO.
And a UDO amendment, yes, sir.
Similar kind of deal. Okay. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing this evening on this item, but leave the public hearing open until our next meeting on March the 29th. Which brings us to our unfinished business on the agenda, the capital improvements plan, item number 11. And apologies to Ms. Jett for keeping her here so late.
Not a problem.
You're certainly recognized.
Not a problem.
Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. So yesterday, the city manager presented the FY18 recommended budget to city council. And before we discuss the CIP, I wanted to highlight a few items that were included in the budget that would be of interest to the Planning Commission. The first is the small area plans. To date, city council has committed 225,000 towards small area plans, and FY 2018 through FY 22 recommended CIP includes an additional 525,000. So planned spending on the area plans totals $750,000. Also, the timing of the small area plans was moved up a year, so the funds are split between FY 2018 and FY 2019. Another item from the operating budget was the funding of a long-range planner. The long-range planner will begin January 1st, and that's... There's also during 2018 going to be conducted a study of city property. So the city owns property throughout the community, whether it be buildings or parcels, and much of this property is required to support the function of government, the police station, fire station, rescue squads, parks, courts, city hall. And we will be conducting a review of these assets to better determine if they're required and to determine if new property is needed. And this analysis will take place in 2018, and no funds are actually needed to conduct I'd also like to highlight the parking action plan. The city, in collaboration with the EDA and the University of Mary Washington, created a parking task force in the fall of 2016. And this group has retained Walker Parking Consultants and is working to create a parking action plan for the City of Fredericksburg, and recommendations are coming in the next few months. And we expect that many of the findings can be accomplished in-house with existing resources, perhaps new management policies, new ordinances, new signage, and these will be at minimal cost. However, there are going to be other items that are identified that are likely to come at a cost and potentially a significant cost. And as a result of the, as the results of the action plan are better understood, staff will be bringing recommendations to city council. These will, recommendations will include funding alternatives. I'd also like to highlight a little bit about Riverfront Park. The budget in FY18 has Riverfront Park on the capital improvement plan, and the construction is currently estimated at $5 million. And the plan is to fund this project with bonds that will be issued in late 2018. Also included in the FY18 budget is an archaeological study. It is a request for $20,000 for a certified local government grant for a comprehensive archaeology study. The grant will be funded with $7,000 of a general fund transfer and a $13,000 grant from the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, and the planning department is currently working on that grant application. So we gave you the handouts of the capital improvement plan. That was what was included in the recommended budget, and I'd like to briefly highlight some of the items on there. The three sections are the CIP for the general fund, the FY18 funding plan for those, and then the last section is the CIP for the enterprise fund, namely water and sewer. The five-year plan for the general government is about $90 million, with 12.3 million identified in 2018. The five-year plan for the enterprise fund is about $18 million.
Ms. Jett, can you, can you explain to us where you are?
Sure.
We have three handouts. Where are you?
So the first handout is called the FY18 Proposed CIP.
Right.
It's page three.
Okay.
And that's going to have projects listed, 18 through 22, and then a column for items that we've identified in out-years. So the first section is schools, and new projects are identified in red. You can see that schools in the five-year planning timeframe are over $39 million. The biggest item being the high school, I'm sorry, the new elementary school. In FY18, some projects of significance that we have are a new roof at Walker Grant, as well as phase one of a four-year HVAC, the RTU stands for rooftop unit, at Hugh Mercer Elementary School. In the out-years for the schools, it includes a high school expansion, and those are some of the highlights from the schools. Okay? The next section of the CIP is public works, and again, that's about $18 million. In FY18, we have about $7.5 million identified. That includes Riverfront Park, as well as a little over $1.5 million in transportation improvements, and another $325,000 related to stormwater management and culvert replacements, as well as $200,000 in downtown streetscape renovations. Another item on this is the replacement of the salt storage facility at the city shop. Okay? Moving on to the next page, you'll see a list of public facilities-related projects, and this is where you'll see the planning area updates, as well as some parking lot improvements at the Central Repahanic Regional Library. And a very important project in FY18 is the replacement of the enterprise resource planning system. That's the computer system that houses our financial data, as well as going to be used by planning. It's used by the schools. It's used by the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer. It's a big project that we are moving forward to. We have a consultant currently helping us put together the requirements for the RFP. Okay? But over the five-year timeframe, we have $20 million identified in public facilities. You'll notice these include some parks and building improvements as well. Okay? And the last two sections of the five-year CIP are public safety and courts, and these include the new fire station. As you know, we're evaluating where to place this, and once that's determined, we'll be able to figure out a better cost, but this is what we currently have in our CIP, as well as a second courtroom, funding for that in FY19, and we have another 250 included for the study phase of the Renwick Building. We have a placeholder amount in the out-years of $10 million, but of course, those determinations are yet to be made. So that's an overview of the five-year CIP. City council will be discussing this on April 4th, and they'll, will discuss the project sheets that will be coming out on the 30th, as well as the funding plan for these projects. The funding plan for FY18 is on the next three pages. This is where we have $12 million of improvements identified, and the plan is to issue $11 million in bonds. We've identified the projects that will fund with the bonds, and that includes the roof replacement, the salt storage facility, the enterprise resource system, as well as Riverfront Park. Also included in the bond issue is a project from last year, Fall Hill widening.
Excuse me, I was just trying to see now, for your bond projects, are they the ones in red?
No, no. No. Projects in red are projects that are new to the CIP.
I see, that's just new.
Yeah. If you look at the, on page seven, the heading's on top, GF stands for general fund transfer.
Uh-huh.
We have various capital improvement projects that have funds in them, so we'll be using the balance in some of those. Sometimes it's related to bond proceeds, and it's tied to a specific project. Other times, it's just related to a capital project that is in the public facilities capital budget, other local revenues, gas tax, state or federal funds, and then finally debt.
So your, your, your bond issuance is 5.3 million?
It would be 5.3 million for public works. It would be one...
Page eight. Oh, I see.
1.3 million for schools.
Okay.
8.15.
And it would be 1.5 million for public facilities. The total value of projects in FY18 that would be bond-funded would be 8.1 million.
Okay. Now where's...
If you go to page eight.
Okay.
There's a bottom gray bar.
Yeah. I'm not used to reading this.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the blue bar below that, where it says FY18 Proposed Debt Issuance, it also includes an FY17 CIP project, the Fall Hill Avenue widening project. That's the local share of that project.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Cool. Okay.
Okay. And then the last section deals with our enterprise funds, water and sewer, wastewater and water, and the source of fundings is listed below. It's not on a separate sheet. So we have identified about $18 million in projects for water and sewer. Some of these projects, for instance, the under wastewater, the composting, and the Snowden pump station, those are projects that we're doing with Spotsylvania County. And then on the water side, the three on the bottom, the Mott's solids dewatering, the Repahanic raw water pump station, and the roof replacement at the Mott's Treatment Plant, those are the city share of projects at the water treatment facility.
Okay. Good. Good. Of the, the items that we forwarded on my ears, of course, picked up at the study of the real estate.
Yes.
What about the other items? We, I think there were four things that we listed.
Right. I think you discussed the proffer here.
Right. Okay.
You had asked about Riverfront Park.
Right.
And that is moving forward. We previously issued bonds, a million-dollar bonds for the construction and study phase of the project, so that, those funds are still being spent. And then, as I said, the... And then, as I said, the construction for Riverfront Park is estimated at $5 million. So that's moving forward. You'd asked about an archaeological study that is included in the budget. You had asked about-
The bridges.
Oh, okay. Those are currently not in the planning phase of the CIP. It's not in the five years, and we haven't, it's not a concrete of enough project to put it in the out-years. So that's something that we'll evaluate every year when we're putting together the CIP. However, it's not on here right now.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's one of those things that, I think the idea behind it was to facilitate the use and safety for the trail, and maybe there are other alternatives to that. I don't know. That might be more feasible. I don't know.
Well, I do know that our new transportation division, we have a transportation planner, and he's actively involved in getting projects through FAMPO. And there are a couple of projects on the CIP that are related to trails that are receiving state or federal funds. So if that became available more so, that would be an option we would explore. But for now, they're not on the CIP.
Right.
But we'll look at it every year.
Well, do commission members have any questions or comments from Ms. Jett? Wanted to certainly thank you for your efforts on this. I think that it's very useful to have some dialogue between the commission and the council on the CIP, and because it certainly does affect all of us. And I appreciate your efforts on it, and-
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll have further discussions about it.
Anytime. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we're trying to figure out, and I think probably a good time is any, just sort of to figure out what we are going to do on the 29th. Thoughts I would throw out is that we obviously have had a great deal of public interest on the signage elements, and that is a public hearing, and we've told the public we're going to continue the public hearing. I'd suggest that may not be the best topic for a work session, because we don't want to give the appearance that we're going behind closed doors or sort of working out some deals. No, there's some technical questions that commissioners may have, informational things we can certainly discuss about it, discuss if you wish to do it. But I would, I'd make the observation that that may be better just to be, to occur in front of everybody. The other items that we have, the Articles One and Two, and the proffer-focused amendments seem to be of a more technical nature, at least at this stage in the process for both these items. And perhaps if we could get that discussed at the work session and resolved, so maybe we could go forward later in the evening. I assume you're thinking of starting before your regular 7:30 time period?
That's what I was thinking. I don't know what other people think.
How early do you all want to start? 6:30, 6?
Well, let me ask this. What other business do you anticipate that we'd have at the meeting?
Well, and the only other item would be to decide what you wanted to do in terms of the CIP and what Ms. Jett's presented tonight. You all had said that you wanted to make a comment on the CIP. This provides you the basic information. From my perspective, it seems to be doing everything you all have asked to do, with the exception of the bridges, and getting four out of five of your goals, I think, is a great, great thing. And so I think that would be the other thing, maybe that could be discussed at the work session of how you want to format it. Perhaps you and Mr. Hornung, you did a very good job on that last, that last letter. I just volunteered, Chris.
I just looked down. I wasn't listening, but I got volunteered for something.
So maybe you all could confer and maybe sketch out maybe a letter to move forward. I'd just throw that out. It doesn't have to be done on the 29th. You have probably until the 12th to sort of come to a finalization on that, but the sooner the better.
The public hearing on the budget and CIP will be April 18th. And then the first read on the budget is the 25th, and the second read is May 9th.
Do we need a public hearing on the CIP?
No, sir.
No.
You're just simply stating your opinion.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's a lot to cover at that meeting, whether it's a regular meeting, work session, whatever.
Well, I think because these are continued public hearings, I think we'd have to consider it as your infrequent, but scheduled second meeting in a month, and conduct it as a regular meeting, starting at 7:30 for the three items that are at public hearing discussion. And perhaps if we focused on the more two technical items in the comprehensive plan, starting a little earlier to sort of try to resolve all those issues. And I don't want to preclude the possibility of talking about signs if there's questions that you want to ask about it, but if it's simply a discussion of the items, that discussion, I think ought to probably generally occur in front of the public.
My only question about that is that if we do all those, starting at 7:30, we may not finish them. I mean, I think the sign ordinance is going to take at least an hour by itself.
Right.
Just that. But all three of these items were public hearing items.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'd suggest if we could work out the, any issues you may have on the Article One and Two and the proffer amendments at the work session, then right at 7:30, we could jump into the sign issue, talk that all through, and then have these two items at the end of the agenda, hopefully that you could take some action and move forward on them.
What do you all think of that? I think that sounds very good.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. So what time do you want to start the work session?
6:30. How's that? 6:30, okay.
What day are we talking?
The 29th.
Tuesday.
I'm going to say the 29th. Oh, and also now, there's a joint meeting with council on the 28th?
Okay. That's, let me, let's finish that topic first before, then I'll go to that.
Okay. Well, with, if there's no objection, then we'll proceed and have a second meeting Wednesday, the 29th, work session, starting at 6:30, regular meeting at 7:30, with those three public hearing items.
Right. And the focus of the work session will be the two technical items in the CIP.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. Then you want to talk about the other?
Yeah. Let me, the other. We had been scheduling on the 21st, next Tuesday, a joint work session with council regarding the area plans. The area plans are not quite come to fruition yet. So we have, the city manager has agreed to cancel that meeting on the 21st, so you will not be having a meeting on the 21st. And we're going to attempt to reschedule it. The proposal at this point that he's trying to get by from council, it appears to be that they would be okay with this, at 6 o'clock on Wednesday, April 12th. So prior to your Wednesday meeting. Tuesdays, the dance card on Tuesdays are full for the next several weeks because of the budget. And so in order not to put the area planning off until middle of May, the goal is to finish the area plan draft by the end of this month. So that would give time to circulate, give you a chance to read it through, have any discussions that you, any questions you want to ask anybody on staff about. But the goal at this point, assuming council members agree to it, which is still an iffy, it isn't final, final, but that would be at 6 o'clock on Wednesday, the 12th, if that's comfortable with everyone.
Well, I think that's great. I'm glad to hear that the city manager is entertaining the idea of joint meetings on Wednesdays as well as Tuesdays, because one's a whole lot better for me. I'm glad to hear that.
I don't anticipate, unless there is, unless we continue work on the sign ordinance, don't finish it on the 29th, which may be a possibility, considering all the issues that may come to fore, and that could be on the April 12th meeting. And we have one other major subdivision that may be ready for, or may or may not be. Other than that, we don't see anything else on the horizon. We don't have a whole list of additional projects.
You know, I was just sitting here thinking that you all gave such a fine tour on our fences. I think a tour on signs might be good as well for those who are interested. Anyway, it's just something to think about. The other, the other unfinished business was mine, item 12, about the bed and breakfast things. I think that can be held over.
I can give you a quick update, if you'd like, Mr. Bates.
Okay. Go for it.
The Senate and the House have passed SB 1578. It has not yet been signed into law. It does four things. It defines a short-term rental. It permits localities to create a registry of short-term rentals. It provides for a fine if you don't register. And it also preserves local authority to regulate the short-term rental of property through the General Land Use and Zoning Authority. So if that gets signed into law, our previous plan, I meant to talk with you about this today, Kathleen, I apologize. Our previous plan had been to craft a UDO text amendment to stratify the use of these, bed and breakfast being more intense, and short-term lodgings the less intense. So that's a general update of where things stand. You'll hear more about that UDO text amendment once the law moves forward, gets signed into law.
Well, once it gets signed, assuming that it does, then if you could distribute a copy of that to the commission, that'd be good. So we get a chance to take a look at the fine print.
Yes, sir.
And once we get that finalized, we'll be going to the usual mechanism of going back to council at a work session, make sure they're comfortable with them, and then have them authorized to bring that forward to you all. So we will definitely go back to council one last time to make sure we're all on board with that, because that was discussed some months ago, and just to revise everyone's memory.
Mr. Johnson, did you have any other?
I just wanted to point out the obvious. If you weren't watching, if you did watch council last night-
Oh, yes.
The Hill El Student Center was approved by council, both a special use and a special exception. There were a couple of changes to the conditions. They specifically tied the construction of the Hill El to the construction of the surface parking lot across the street, and the provision of the 18 additional needed spaces within that surface parking lot. They allowed four years to start the project, to the typical two, and they declined to pick any or either facade and let the applicant decide which facade they wanted to move forward on. The Freddy's special use was also approved. The applicant had come back and suggested that he wanted non-summer hours of 10 to 11. You'd approved summer hour, oh, summer hours of 10 to 12, non-summer of 10 to 10. He wants 10 to 11. The council voted 10 to 11 year-round.
On weekends, 10 to 10?
Yes. I was speaking on weekends. All that was on the weekends. Weekdays have always been 10 to 10 all around, so I was speaking on that. The fence ordinance was approved, as Marnie is wanting me to remind you, did occur, and so that did go through. That's just a brief update. I already said that I don't expect too many more new items.
I don't know whether you all got to watch any of the last night's council meeting. I gave up after a while. But I was very disappointed that, to see that the planning commission and council were so far apart on that application. I think that planning commission did a very fine job with that application. I came, I think we came up with a good solution. Unfortunately, they didn't see it that way. You win some, lose some, right? Anything else? If not, meeting's adjourned.